Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, Virtual Meeting of the Hampton School Board to Order. And Ms. Bowers, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Saffronja? Here. Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all board members are present this evening. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for our meeting this evening?
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Cherry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers. Ms. Bowers, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry? Aye. Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Saffronja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is Item 2, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda this evening consists of Item 2.01 Personnel Report Number 20-14, 2.02 Minutes of the School Board Retreat of September 9th, 2020, Item 2.03 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 16th, 2020, Item 2.04 Certification of the Closed Session of September 30th, 2020, and 2.05 Release from Compulsory Attendance Religious Exemption. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Ms. Cherry?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Banks Gray and a second from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Saffronja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is Superintendent and Staff Reports. I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman and members of the school board. It is an absolute pleasure to begin our staff reports. As you recall, but certainly, and many of the board members, that the board adopted shortly after my arrival, the 2020 Strategic Plan. And during that time, Dr. Cynthia Cooper had led, basically led the board through the strategic planning process. It was quite inclusive and collaborative whereby the board was certainly involved, but also many stakeholders, internal and external stakeholders, were involved in the development of the 2020 Strategic Plan. And so with that in mind, we invited Dr. Cooper back. Of course, she's currently retired, and we extended the invitation for her to return and to focus on the current strategic plan that she was so intimately involved with in terms of its development, and to lead us through a renewal process. And she started that work prior to the pandemic, and then, of course, we had COVID-19, and we felt at that particular point, the two of us working together and through this process, that it really made sense to at least put on hold the strategic planning process for a new strategic plan, and to just continue the work around the statistics, looking at the data, and to develop a tactical report for the board. Unfortunately, Dr. Cooper was, she's not able to join us in person because of a family emergency, but in Dr. Cooper's style, she prepared for this evening, and so we'll hear her report. And I think Ms. Bowers will now lead us through that in terms of the strategic plan, the 2020 Strategic Plan Tactical Report, whereby Dr. Cooper will provide an overview of all of the functional areas, the major strategic focus areas, and where we are in the process that we're following as it relates to the current strategic plan. So, Ms. Bowers, or you?
Yes, I'm in the process.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Cooper, the former Executive Director of Research Planning and Evaluation for Hampton City Schools, who now has the best of both worlds. Although I retired in the fall of 2018, I've come back on as a research consultant to do some of the work I most loved, which is measuring and reporting progress. I'm pleased to be with you tonight to introduce a new report of progress on the Vision 2020 Strategic Plan, and we call it the Tactical Report. Tonight's agenda is that we'll begin with our strategic goals, and then I'll share the basics of the tactical report. We'll take a look at the measures for each of our strategic focus areas, and then we'll wrap up with potential next steps. Before we move into measuring the work, we should always start with what we're working towards. The mission of our organization, its values, its strategic goals have been in place for over a decade. When we began the last strategic planning cycle in 2015, 2016, stakeholders, over a thousand of them, all agreed that our mission was solid. These six strategic focus areas are critical and that they should remain. We asked them, well, could we put them into a prioritized order? And they worked at that and said, hmm, it doesn't just work one through six. Instead, what they did was to create a visual model of our whole strategic plan by putting them in layers. At the center, you have maximizing every child's learning. That's our core work. And they said, we're not going to get that done unless we have exceptional staff working in safe and nurturing environments. Those two things go hand in hand. You won't get one without the other. They said, supporting that are innovative support systems for families, students, our staff, and the engagement of our community and families. And then finally said, the plate that it all sits on is the effective and efficient management of our fiscal resources. And so, there were key initiatives in each of our strategic focus areas, but we found out that as these five years have gone on, we've continued to add tools to the toolbox. We've continued to put strategies into action. And so rather than go back and forth, this one's an initiative, this one's a new strategy, we decided, like for next-generation learning, to call them all tactics. And there are 30 of them in all, not surprisingly, because maximizing learning is the core business. 10 of our tactics you'll see in Maximize Student Learning. And then all of the other areas have three to five tactics. For each of the tactics in the full tactical report that will be forthcoming from the superintendent's office, you'll see three things. You'll see a visual rating telling you where we are. You'll see why this work is important, why we decided to do this, and then there's a status update to let you know where we are, what the latest thing is. This is what it will look like. There's your visual rating over there on the left, upper right-hand corner, an explanation of the tactic and why it's important, and then the current status. The visual ratings are on a scale from 1 to 10, and you have an explanation at the beginning of the report that tells you what all different 10 ratings mean. But that, all the way down in the red means we haven't even begun yet, and all the way up in those four levels of green, the last one means 100% of the work is done, it's become part of the organizational culture, and all of our outcome indicators are moving in the right direction. And then you'll see tonight that most of our ratings are somewhere in between. Rather than go through 30 separate pages that look like this, tonight, what I'd like to do is to go through each strategic focus area, show you the measures there, and then we'll go into the next steps. So I'd like to start from the outside in. We'll start with fiscal management. There are four different measures here. The first one, or tactics, the first one is providing an electronic requisition and purchasing system. We have Tyler Munis in place. It's fully implemented. That system allows us to more accurately track expenditures and come up with spending plans. The reporting capabilities are fantastic, and we're doing well there. The next one involving end-users in our purchasing decisions really came about in the strategic planning process in 1516. And it's not an established policy, but it is a common practice now, that the end-users come to the table and help us decide the best course of action for major purchases. You'll see our response to interventions system is one such example. When staff came in on that decision, they saved us about $175,000 a year in one of the vendor-offered systems by saying, it doesn't offer really what we need, and so we decided to come up with a system in-house, and that's working much better for us. The third tactic here is putting in a program-based accounting system. This means that all of our programs, like reading intervention or dropout prevention, have a special numerical code that's in our cost string. This allows us to take a look at all of the expenses related to a particular program, no matter what the funding source is, whether it's a grant, or whether it's the operating fund, or a revenue-based budget, we can pool all of those expenditures together so that we can do analysis on what things really cost us and whether we're getting the return that we expect. Again, the chart of accounts is set up, the reporting capabilities are there now, and we'll be designing a system to begin to use these practices more regularly. The last one of these, maintaining enrollment through unique programming, really doesn't come out of the finance department, it comes out of what we do as a division in general. But we have done an excellent job at it. We have outrun the Weldon Cooper Center predictions for our enrollment for the last two fiscal years because of the things that we have onboard. Things like magnet schools, the academies of Hampton, a gifted center, fundamental schools, our digital learning program, all these things make Hampton City Schools a very attractive place for students to come, and so families are very eager to have their children remain with us. So, beyond this, let's get into the next level. Families and community engagement and satisfaction is the next area. And we have really five measures here, but I've collected, I've collapsed them into three. The first one is a focus on customer service. We really want our climate and culture to provide a warm and welcoming environment, and so we have resources, expectations, training in place to improve our customer service at all levels of the organization. It's already pretty good. You can see that we're in the green, but we got derailed in our training from the COVID-19 virus, and we're just picking that back up, not just for frontline staff, but for all staff. So everyone who deals with Hampton City Schools comes away with a very positive feeling. Another thing that we knew we needed to do was to truly let people know the great things going on in Hampton City Schools. And so this expanded marketing of positive news, we are doing very well at that. From the classroom, through the school, through the division, we have lots of things going on to let people know what great things our kids are accomplishing and what wonderful things our teachers are accomplishing. And so that is all part of our effective communication. And we have three different strategies under our effective communication. One's the division website. I'm sure you're very familiar with that. It's outstanding. It's very navigable. It's an excellent way to get information, and it's kept up-to-date all of the time. Then we have a division messaging system that works very well, too. It can do text messages, it can do phone messages, email messages as well. And then finally, our social media. I can't even keep up with all of our different social media platforms. We have YouTube, we have Facebook, we have Instagram. We have over 15,000 followers on one of our systems. So really, the things going on to market what's going on in Hampton City Schools and to effectively let people know what's going on, all of these have become very well-developed over the past five years. The other side of this level is our innovative support systems. And although there's a lot going on here, we've decided to focus on three of them. First, because so many things are online now, even before the pandemic, technology literacy for staff and students, and I think we've expanded that to families, has been a key initiative for us. And we have worked to put training resources online and make them available with videos, with manuals, with step-by-step tip sheets for virtually every different system that's out there for folks to use. A next thing that we have worked to improve is our curriculum management system. It used to be on a vendor-based system, and our end-users got in there and said, it's really cumbersome, it's hard to navigate, could we please make that more intuitive? And so our curriculum instruction and assessment team, the CBIA group, moved everything out of the vendor-hosted solution onto Google. And it really is a marvelous thing, where every resource is linked in through the curriculum documents themselves. Last thing that we have in this area is accessible training resources. Because our folks are busy, they need access to training resources really 24/7. And you'll see that most of these things are online, they're in multiple formats, and they're available whether you're in the division or whether you're outside the division. And so we're in the green on all three of these measures, but we'll continue to build. Moving into the next level, where we have attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, there are four major tactics in this. I'm sure you're pretty familiar with the competitive compensation and benefits programs. Over the past five years, we've seen increases of better than 13% in our teacher-scaled salaries, and we've offered additional compensation in other critical areas as well. We have unique benefits, like a wellness program with a discount on insurance, and a wellness center, and a pharmacy. All of these make it easier to recruit and to keep exceptional staff in Hampton City Schools. Because most teachers who leave the profession do so in years one, two, or three, our second tactic is a comprehensive induction and support system. We went from having an orientation that went for a few days before school started to having a three- to five-year process of induction and support. It includes training before school starts, training throughout the year, a mentor in the building, feedback loop for teachers to tell us how things are going and what they need, and our early indications on teacher retention say, these things are working for us. Professional learning is a third tactic, and we were already doing very well at that. When we did the strategic plan in 2015, 16, teachers told us that that was one of the things that made them very happy to work here. But since that time, it has gone off the scales. We have a summer learning playbook, we have a monthly learning blast, actually, it might be more frequent than monthly, that shows by area every different thing that's available. And the other thing is that we have classes in the summertime, we have classes during conferences, we have in-person experiences after school, but we also have podcasts, online training, cyber teaching cafe, cyber learning cafe. So we have lots of different things and lots of different formats, so our teachers can learn when and where it's most convenient for them. And then the last thing that we really do to attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff is to ask them how it's going and try to respond to their needs. The curriculum management system is a major example of that. We listen to teachers who said our old system was difficult to navigate, and we built an entirely new system. We get feedback from client surveys of different things. Lots of departments ask teachers about how they're doing on specific things, and then really work to make sure that we're meeting their needs, sort of a customer service focus from inside the organization as well. The next piece of making this all work is our nurturing environment, and that's not just for students, it's for staff and everyone here. We started this out by focusing on student behavior with a program called PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. And this program really focuses on teaching expected behaviors, so that we don't expect kids to know what we want. We teach it to them directly, just like we're teaching algebra. And we positively reinforce the behavior that we like, and when students are not doing well, we reteach the behavior that we expect. And we had really, really good results with this. Our student infractions dropped by the thousands, but we decided that we needed to add more than that and really move from positive behavior to climate and culture overall. So we have culture, climate teams at all of our schools, and one of the next things that we did was to intentionally focus, focus on building relationships, not just with adults and students, but students with each other. And so there are activities that are done at the beginning of the year and throughout the year to really turn classrooms into small learning communities where students work with each other to make sure everybody's successful. Then, the next thing that we added to this was a focus on social and emotional learning, and not making that something that teachers had to teach outside of what they're already expected to do, but putting things in place in the curriculum so that it was a part of regular teaching and learning. Social and emotional learning has competencies. Some of those are self-controls or empathy. And so, we started with elementary school, and we started with language arts, and started to build content so students could learn empathy and have to demonstrate empathy while doing their reading and writing assignments. And from there, it's expanded into all core content areas, and actually, some of our resource activities as well, so that helping students get these social and emotional learning competencies is a regular part of teaching and learning in Hampton City Schools. The last thing that you'll see here is a tiered system of behavior support. Just like we have interventions for students who struggle with their reading or with their mathematics, we're working to build a system to help students who struggle with behavior. We are more than 50% of the way there, but we are continually adding strategies to help students who are really having a difficult time. So we've rated this as, as something that is really at the midway of the environment. And now, at the core work, let's talk about maximizing student learning. There are 10 different tactics here, and the first three are all wrapped in together. A guaranteed and viable curriculum means that we have the right expectations for rigor, we have the right content, and we have a curriculum that's accessible to all students. And we have worked very hard and rewritten 183 different curricula under a model called Understanding by Design, and we are doing very well there. It is starting to move into being part of our organizational culture. The next thing that you need to have is, once the curriculum is what you need it to be, we need to make sure that our lessons are designed according to the curriculum and that the instruction that happens in the classroom is a reflection of the lesson design. And the way that we focused on this is really working at accurately observing what's going on in our classrooms and giving folks feedback that's very usable so that they can make the small improvements that are necessary on a day-to-day basis to improve outcomes for our young people. And then the last part here is an authentic assessment of learning. And that means that we would assess learning in a way that it would be reflected in the real world. Project-based learning is, is one way that we do this, where students do a project that demonstrates all of the skills and content knowledge that they have acquired in a particular unit. And we have ourselves in the yellow here because the next step of this is taking it across the board at all levels and really creating assessments that are interdisciplinary so that there will be one big project that measures outcomes in all four core curriculum areas. And that is a very complicated task, but it is well underway, and at the same time, we are also preparing students to be successful on standardized tests through our critical skills assessments. And so we are in the green on two of the three of these and working towards the green in the last. Next, you'll see use of data. The first two things that we have up here are whether we use student data to guide our instruction, and we do very well at that. Our Response to Intervention database allows us to track the progress of individual students in multiple areas, and it has really helped us target interventions so that students can continue to grow. The next one of these is our use of data to support schools. So just like we have a tiered system of supports for young people, we have a tiered system of supports for our schools. Based on their performance data, we can provide them with extra help, we can provide them with extra resources, we could provide them with extra training. These are things that we do as a matter of business, and so both of those are in the green. Then we're going to switch gears a little bit here. The next one that we have up in Maximize Student Learning is a literacy program, and what's different in Hampton is that it goes from birth to post-secondary. Most school divisions have a literacy program, and ours is well-established, but when we expanded it to include what happens before students even come to us, we're over 50% of the way there, but we're not into the green on this one yet. We have established kindergarten readiness checklists, and we've established a relationship with daycare providers and provided for them some literacy training and some resources that can be used. But it's not across the city, a systematic delivery yet, and so we've rated ourselves in the yellow on this, which is more than halfway there, but we'll continue to expand those opportunities for our youngest learners, pre-kindergarten, and we'll get back to you when that moves into the green, which I'm sure it will. And then here are our last four tactics under Maximize Student Learning. And these are things that relate directly into those unique programs that are keeping our And these are things that relate directly into those unique programs that are keeping our enrollment up. And the first one is our expansion of dual enrollment. In a partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College, we have 11 different courses that are offered in our schools where our high school students who are taking them can earn college credit. We had our students learn, earn over 3,600 college credit in the 2018, 19 school year. And I can't wait to see the outcomes when the 19, 20 stats become available. The next thing up here is again, one of those unique programs, the Academies of Hampton. Our students in grades 10, 11, and 12 really have some opportunities with over 16 academies, over 40 pathways. They really have some choices on how to prepare themselves for college and career readiness. I wish these programs had been in place when I went to high school. In addition to the Academies of Hampton, we have college and career readiness plans. And that college and career readiness really begins at the elementary level with awareness. At middle school, we have children doing inventories to assess their interests. And we have them exploring different careers and, and really starting to make some decisions about where they'll want to go when they get to high school. And then every high schooler has a college and career readiness plan. And then last but not least, the 30th of our tactics is really kind of apropos now. In the age of COVID, the expansion of the digital learning program has been exponential in Hampton City Schools long before we needed it for remote instruction. We had a device in the hands of every fifth through 12th grader. So it's been much easier for Hampton to expand that to the lower levels. And not, our students don't just have a digital device. We assure that they are technologically literate so that they can use it. And we have training resources online. We have guides online. We have activities for use in the classroom embedded in our curriculum. And so we were really in a lot better position moving into this pandemic to set up virtual learning than a lot of our neighboring school divisions. And so it's something we're very proud of and it continues to be a focus for our strategic plan. Now, I'm sure after all of this, you're wondering what could be next? So what we had planned to do was to bring you five years' worth of data and an end report on the 2020 vision strategic plan. But then came a pandemic this spring and we do not have standardized test results. There's been a waiver to accreditation. Luckily, our schools were 100% accredited before that waiver went into effect. But we don't have the end data that we expected to provide to you. So one thing that we're offering up for consideration is that we stayed the course. We use the current strategic plan and the initiatives and tactics that we have in place moving forward. The reason for this is that we're not finished. And you saw that although most things were in the green, there's still work to be done. And we know that it's, we know that these things are effective. So that we would ask the board to consider extending the current strategic plan for an additional year. And then if you choose to do that during that year, we would create and implement a safe process, probably virtual to begin with, for stakeholders to give us input on the current plan tactics that are in place. And also to help them or create a way for them to give us potential new tactics to be considered and for them to be able to review those new tactics. All of that with the idea that we would update the strategic plan and have a new one for consideration by the board prior to the start of the 2021, 22 school year. So you have given up a lot of your time tonight. We are very excited about the tactic report and I'm sure you will be as well when it comes to you from the superintendent's office. And I thank you for your time and turn the floor back over to the board chair. Thank you.
All right. I wish she was here, but I thank Dr. Cooper and that was great to hear her voice again. Dr. Smith, do you have anyone in place to answer questions? You're, you're still on mute, Dr. Smith.
I'll be more than happy to field those questions and then send them to, I think we have certainly members of the division leadership team who are present, who can answer specific questions, but I'll field those questions if board members have questions on the front end.
Okay. Do I have questions from board members about Dr. Cooper's presentation? Hearing, oh yes, Ms. Cherry. You're on mute, Ms. Cherry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Dr. Cooper, who always gives an excellent report. I just, I know that we are being asked to consider staying the course when it comes to the five-year strategic plan. But I did have one quick question and probably someone like Ms. Gole could answer the question if she's there. The part that is going to focus on customer service, I know in the past we've had a strong focus on that. So I was just wondering were there, were there going to be some additional pieces to that? Or we're going to pick up some things we used to do, but no longer do? And just what that extended piece on customer service is going to look like?
Excellent question. And we do have Ms. Gole with us. I'll ask that she would share information. She can peel the layers back. But we do have plans to continue that customer service focus. And Ms. Gole, you want to jump right in?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. We were fortunate to be able to present to the board in February, just a few weeks before we shut down for COVID in March, where we were as far as customer service and the training that we were able to implement last year up until March. So we were able to train all of our frontline staff. We also had training with our nurses and nurses assistants, our cafeteria managers, our bus drivers and bus attendants. And we created a division-wide customer service video that we shared with every employee last school year. We did get derailed a little bit in the spring, but we are very excited that we have a second training scheduled for our frontline staff on October 23rd. So this coming month, it will be virtual. It's going to be a professional conference for those individuals. I don't want to get into too much because we've got lots of surprises for them. We're very excited about it. But even, even friendly swag where they can squish stars whenever they're a little frustrated so that they still have a great customer service going forward. So that's our next step is the October 23rd. And then we will pick back up, I believe with our security officers because that piece was not able to be implemented in the spring. So yes, we are moving forward. We set those goals last year. We created that customer service team that helped drive those goals. And we're excited that we're moving forward even in Zoom in a few weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gole. I knew you would have all the pieces and put them together.
I hope I had them all. I feel like I'm forgetting something that I have on the top of my head right now.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other questions from board members? Do I have, yes, Dr. Woodhouse. You, you're on mute, Dr. Woodhouse.
Okay. Can you hear me now? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. I don't know who, but I will address this to Dr. Smith and then maybe someone else can answer. But I, I remember when we were talking about under the heading of Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. We were talking about behavior problems and getting parents involved in helping us with problem children or problem students. And especially with, when it came to online bullying. How are we as far as that's concerned, getting parents involved real early?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse for the question. At this particular point, we really have expanded our initiatives and strategies within the social and emotional learning to really focus on all those aspects. Number one, how to operate and exist within a community and how we treat each other as adults. And then how we treat and each other as, as students and, and peers of each other as well. So our social and emotional learning encompasses that. And we really have expanded our work in that regard.
Are the parents really, are the parents really getting involved early with this endeavor?
You know, based on the survey information that we have received from parents and certainly from students, because we, we get survey information from students, it's clear that we're making progress in that area. Because we, we survey our young people and ask whether they feel safe in their school, whether or not they feel they have bullying situations or specific concerns. And so there was, it was clear evidence that we were moving in the right direction. Again, if you look at that, the range in terms of that tactical gauge, we know that we still have work to do. But again, we're making progress there. And we get feedback from young people because that's very important to get feedback from students because they live and occupy that space on a regular basis. And so we'll continue that certainly when we get back to in-person as well.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Any comments from our student representative, Mr. Kornick?
Yeah. So I have one question and I'll address this to Mr. Eagle because I believe it's most pertinent. But so for that innovative support systems category, how are we measuring the technology literacy for staff and students criteria on the, the end user part of that?
And I can probably, Mr. Kornick, let's direct that to Dr. Caggianno. I think he'll jump in and, and respond.
Yes, good question. I would say that we're taking a differentiated approach. So for example, you heard Dr. Cooper speak in reference to professional development, professional learning opportunities. And Kate Maxlow, who heads up our team of digital learning specialists, have done a lot to meet the needs of teachers. So whether that's surveying staff or meeting with focus groups to determine what are those PD opportunities? And then based on some of those surveys, Mr. Kornick, you'll see strengths arise. And so rather than previously having a one-size-fits-all approach, it's a very differentiated approach to meet teachers where they are. For example, when we came back this school year, we had five specific trainings that we offered for teachers to ensure a successful start to the virtual, 100% virtual environment. And if you were a teacher very skilled in some of those, some of those specific training areas, you could clip out, if you will, and, and document that you have that under your belt and have mastered that skill and would move on. And so, you know, taking a systems approach to ensure that all staff have the necessary skills, but doing so in a differentiated manner.
All right. Thank you, Paul. So now I guess we will move on to superintendent's report 3.02, school opening update. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the school board. We'll start with our school opening update and provide those specific updates. I think Ms. Bowers or Dr. Caggianno will start the PowerPoint presentation. And so I'll start with, you know, the mere fact that as a school division, we continue to focus our efforts around one division, one transformation. And this evening, we would like to share with the board within that context, the important steps that we have taken, that, that we have taken and that we continue to take as it relates to transitioning to a modified in-person learning. We think that we've given a lot of consideration to ensure that we have a successful transition when it is appropriate to do so. And so this evening's presentation is very much less about timeline. It is more about process or processes, structures and systems that we feel that we have in place. And so if you look at the agenda, we'll share information regarding critical steps taken in preparation for modified in-person learning, but also protocols and measures that we believe we have in place. We'll talk about the operational capacity, phase two stage return of in-person learners and what that might look like, as well as a phase two instructional model or models by level. And then the communication plan around that, because you can have all of these wonderful processes and structures and systems in place. But then it is just as important, just as important for us to have a strong communication plan to articulate and share the message and facilitate, facilitate that. And then in-person, the learning metrics that we, that we have and that we'll consider. So that's pretty much the agenda that I'd like for us to follow as it relates to this particular update. Next slide, please. As I shared with all of our administrators this morning in a meeting, a planning meeting, that process informs product. That it's important to have the appropriate processes and structures, structures and systems in place. And so process informs product. Next slide, please. A little bit in terms of critical steps taken in preparation for modified in-person learning. And I'll stay at a very high level. And then members of the team will certainly go and provide details. But we have secured the necessary personal protective equipment, the PPE, as a part of the critical steps. Developed mitigation strategies to include sick care rooms independent of school clinics. Created protocols and expectations to really facilitate healthy and safe schools and work sites, not just when students would return in person, but to ensure that we have healthy and safe workplaces as well. We have also trained all school nurses on contact tracing protocols. Nurse Gill covered that with our administrators today. And our school nurses were also participants as a part of the all principals meeting that we, planning meeting that we had earlier today. We have developed the modified in-person school level schedules. Dr. Caggianno, working with our executive directors of school leadership, Dr. Owens at the elementary level and our pre-K through eight schools, and Dr. Haynes at the secondary level. And Dr. Haynes, as well as Dr. Anita Owens, they have involved our principal school administrators as a part of that development. And so that has been very important for us. We have surveyed families, as you know, as a board regarding modified return to school learning preference, whether or not parents or family members desire it once we turn to, return to an in-person learning environment, whether or not the preference would be that, the preference of remaining with virtual or moving to that in-person setting. We, as we mentioned to the board, we reopened the modified return to school learning preference survey for families to change their preference if they so desired. And you will hear about that data and how we're using the data to drive our decision-making. Again, process informs product. We have surveyed staff twice regarding their ability to return to the work site and provided a follow-up survey for staff who indicated childcare concerns. And Ms. Robin Root, our executive director of human resources, she has been intimately involved regarding those specific surveys and providing feedback and the necessary follow-up. And she'll, she'll speak to that this evening as well. Other critical steps taken in preparation for modified in-person learning. We have conducted an operational capacity analysis based on family preferences and staff responses. You know, at the end of the day, to make certain that when we return, when it's appropriate for us to return to in-person learning, that we have a good understanding in terms of our operational capacity. So this evening you will hear how we have analyzed the information that we received from families as well as staff responses. And we think we have a very good handle or understanding of the operational capacity. We have created bus riding protocols, provided Um, we have created bus riding protocols, provided uh, Hampton, our uh, transportation department with the, the student data. Uh, for families that indicated that uh, they had a desire uh, when appropriate to return to the in-person. Uh, instructional setting. Uh, we have been able to now provide the transportation department with that data. So that they can begin the process of considering what bus schedules might uh, look like in terms of routes and the timing there. Um, collaborated with uh, food nutrition services to ensure and to ensure a plan for distribution of breakfast and lunch. For a modified in-person uh, return uh, with, with learners. And that's very important. As to how we would handle that in a modified in-person setting with our learners. Uh, we've also, we have also worked with members of the division lead, leadership team. Uh, along with uh, members of their departments and schools to create uh, school schedules. And uh, and, and services. Um, certainly not the day-to-day schedules, but the overall. Uh, what the, the uh, school schedules might look like. So we have given consideration to that as well. Uh, so again, the critical steps uh, that we have taken. Um, the next slide. What are some of the protocols and expectations that uh, we have developed for a modified in-person uh, learning? That's just as important to make certain that uh, we can all operate from the same uh, page and have an understanding. As to how, how we would do business in a modified in-person learning uh, setting uh, and so forth. So. Uh, we have developed uh, protocols and expectations around well checks. Uh, face coverings and face shields, uh, what we expect there. Uh, classroom uh, setup with a minimum of three feet in terms of physical distancing and certainly six feet as the optimum division protocol. Um, breakfast and lunch, uh, we have specified within our uh, protocols and expectations. Um, that we certainly um, uh, have, would have in place um, the appropriate physical distant, distant distancing there as well. Um, and then arrival and dismissal, um, how we would uh, facilitate arrivals and dismissals. Cleanliness during the school day, early student pickup, late student arrivals, supplies and backpacks recess. Student wrote uh, transitions, visit tours, school bus and, and so forth. So. A number of protocols and expectations um, around a modified in-person uh, learning. Uh, setting within, in the school. Um, so just critical steps that we've taken to date. Um, as we move toward again, less about timeline, more about. Uh, the processes, structures uh, and systems that we believe that are critical. Uh, to a successful transition to that of a modified in-person uh, learning. Uh, th- at this time, I think I'm going to turn it over to uh, Nurse Gill. And uh, she will continue with protocols and, and measures that are in place. Um, certainly as it relates to um, health services. Nurse Gill?
Thank you, Dr. Smith and board members. Um, in general, we will require that all staff and students are, are wearing the masks. We have. Um, all staff have received at least one face covering and one face shield from Hampton City Schools and all students. Um, are in the process of getting them into their schools where we're receiving one face covering. With their school logo from Hampton City Schools. These are arriving at the schools, um. Not as we speak, but started uh, in the last couple of days. And so when the students do return, they'll receive that. Uh, face covering, which should encourage them hopefully to wear them. Um, our goal truly is, is to continue to educate um, both staff and stu- and students on the importance of wearing them. As it relates to the droplets and things that we can pass along. Uh, general measures also, they ate, all HCS administrators and nurses have participated in reopening training, which we did today. I thought it was very successful and, and also sent to them a PowerPoint presentation that covered all of the things that, that uh, we discussed. And so that they can then uh, replicate that with their own staff um, on the protocols and the measures that we're going to take within their schools. Uh, as Dr. Smith has said, we um, our nurses have been trained in contact tracing either through uh, online courses or. Um, through professional development um, that I've provided. We have uh, we will assist in communicating with the Hampton Health Department, which we have done. Probably on an ongoing basis anyway, um, throughout this time of being out. Um, and then should a COVID concern arise, uh, how we will handle that. And I have a. A track line, so to speak, with the Hampton Health Department uh, person so that we can do that quickly. Our HCS Health Services has a database that we use to track um, those students and staff with symptoms. As well as those students and staff who may have come in contact with someone with a positive COVID, as well as those that have positive COVID test. And also with that, we have the questions that are necessary to ask to assist the Health Department in their being able to um. Do it can, uh, additional contact tracing if need be, but. I think that our staff have been very thorough in their documentation, so it's very easy to share with uh, the Hampton Health Department. Uh, what we've done so far to save them some time as well because we've, our stuff is doing very well in that area. And we do have a two-pronged health screening um, with, for the purposes of ensuring that we try to. Keep as many children and staff home that are not feeling well. Uh, they are to do the health assessment before they even arrive to school. Um, that's both with staff, students and, and then obviously. Uh, we also do it with our visitors coming into our buildings. But then once the students do arise, arrive at school, the students will report directly to their assigned classrooms. And we have posters in their. Um, classrooms that go over the symptoms and each teacher will do a, a, as part of their morning routine, a evaluation. And nothing that would point out, oh, you have COVID or anything like that. We won't be doing that, but we will be saying, well. Looks like you might need to see the nurse just to make sure that you're okay. Uh, with where, how you're feeling because we want to optimize how you feel so we can, you know, learn more and more each day. Late arrivals will be assessed in the main office or in the attendance area, and that's to ensure that they don't get to the classroom and. Uh, our routine has already been established as what we're doing. So we have taken into consideration any late arrivals and how we'll process them as well. Illness at school and at work, um, students and staff report symptoms will be assessed by the school nurse. Uh, they are trained in, on how to do that. We have uh, a sick room, but we've called it a care room. It just sounds a little more positive about how we're going to take care of them. Um, room would, will be available in each of the school buildings. Um, we've designated those. Uh, many of the schools have had to rearrange their entire. Uh, areas to accommodate having that uh, care area. Uh, so we have a little bit of an isolation to keep the sick ones there. Um, nursing staff will provide a quarantine recommendations based on CDC guidelines. Um, we are not providers, but we can at least give them the information that they would have gotten anywhere on CDC guidelines. And all students and parents uh, and staff will be advised to seek medical advice. Again, we're not providers, but we. Do want them to seek that medical advice so that they um, have their physicians understanding where they stand at this point. Uh, we also have the COVID guidelines, including um, notify. Notifying the Hampton Health Department and we will follow those processes uh, from notification to them and what they recommend as we prog- progress on. I'm hoping with the measures that we're taking that that will be less of an issue. Um, but again, it takes a, it takes an entire team to make this accomplish. And so between. The support of the parents and the support of the staff, I think that we can do that um, safely. And then a visitors, I sort of mentioned that, but visitors still have to maintain appointments uh, and coming into our buildings. We feel that that is very. Important at this point. Um, and that they'll be assessed at the. At the main entrance to the building. And there is a sign posted in all the main entrances that say, you know, here's the concerned symptoms. Do you have any of these? If you do, then we ask that you reschedule your appointment and that mask will be required for all visitors coming into the building. And then we have a contactless drop-off for student items. Um, that way that parents don't have to um, come into the building unless necessary to pick up their sick children. Um, but we're trying to limit to them as much as possible, any contact that they may have with us as well. And so my part is done and I would like to pass this on to Dr. Bowling, who has uh, will give you more information.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to focus on uh, disinfecting supplies, uh, personal PPEs and uh, building a, a new. Idea or new culture uh, within our school system there. Uh, first of all, in terms of disinfecting supplies and custodial training, HES is invested in. Upgrading our disinfectants that we are having our schools. Currently, we are using all hospital-grade disinfectants throughout each of our schools. So even tonight, while. We're all asleep, those schools are being sanitized and properly prepared uh, for all of our factory employees to return. Uh, we use quantitative-based uh, sanitizers, peroxide-based sanitizers, and we're really excited about this new. Um, disinfecting solution. This is a all-natural botanical disinfecting solution. Um, in other words, it's organic. There, there are no harsh chemicals uh, like ammonia or peroxide or, or any kind of chloride that's being used. Uh, even when you use this, you don't even have to use PPEs, although we always will. You don't have to. So we're excited by bringing this one. Uh, into our regiment. It is uh, EPA approved to kill COVID uh, in four minutes. So it's a very, very good product and all natural. Uh, we also have new uh, disinfecting equipment that we brought on board. Uh, we have the latest and greatest in electrostatic disinfecting machines. I've talked about these earlier where they charge the particles and it sticks to everything as it's raised through the air to sanitize and kill it. Uh, we also have for large areas our chemical atomizers. Um, so if we're going down locker rooms, gyms. Uh, auditoriums, these things can spray lots of chemical over large areas and uh, take care of those very quickly and sanitizing those. Um, and one of the most important things that we've invested in is the training of our custodial staffs. Uh, we have two service providers, ABM and AFS. Uh, and they've done a great job in working with our um. Custodians and teaching them about the new cleaning protocols or enhanced cleaning protocols that need to take place. Uh, also how to properly use PPEs, uh, how to mix and handle these new hospital-grade chemicals. And the dwell times and kill times that are associated with those. And then making sure that they know how to use all of the new equipment that is properly uh, taken care of and functioning every night like it should. Also, we've added new levels of accountability in our schools. So if you go in our schools now, we will sanitize and clean nightly. That will always take place. On outside the doors of each of the classrooms, entering cafeterias or bathrooms, there'll be status sheets. So that when you walk in, there'll be a sheet that'll be broken down Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And as those rooms are cleaned and sanitized, those custodians will sign and date that that's been taken care of. So this gives a, a good feeling to that teacher. So if they walk in there and say, is this room clean? They know they can look at that board or look at that sheet and say, yes, they've been in here and sanitized this room. There's also an additional layer of protection that we put in and that we're bringing in our zone managers. To go around and inspect the schools at night to make sure this has happened. And they go into the office and have to sign a book saying that they have personally inspected the school as a reassurance to the administration there that this is actually taking place. Next slide, please. Also, in terms of um, personal protection, uh, equipment or our PPEs, I think we've done a fantastic job with this. Um, as Nurse Gill mentioned earlier, we'll have cloth masks for our students when they return. Uh, we have twenty-one thousand of those waiting for our students to return and give out. We also know that sometimes they may forget their mask or a child may need one to get on the school bus or something. Or a visitor may need a mask to come into the school. So we purchased over thirty thousand disposable masks to have ready uh, in those cases. So we're. We're not going to leave a child at a bus stop. We're not going to stop a child for coming in or for scrap breaks. We're ready to handle that situation. Also, we have three thousand five hundred face shields available for our students uh, or teachers or staff as well. If there's a problem with wearing that mask, they may have to wear the face shield. Uh, desk shields, we are happy to say that we have over twenty thousand student desk shields. So every Hampton City student will have their own desk shield uh, to place up. We've gotten actually a larger, taller size. Um, for our high school students. So they're sort of sized accommodated for our student size. Also, we haven't forgotten about our office workers uh, at these high points of service where they're dealing with the public coming in. We put over a hundred and thirty Plexiglas shields up. These are large ones that we have custom ordered right here at Hampton, out of a local business. There and they put those up for us and they put those in and I think it makes the staff feel very protected and they've done a great job. Also, uh, we have over three thousand boxes of uh, non-latex disposable gloves. We go with vinyl or natural gloves. So we don't have any of that latex interaction that may happen or allergies there. Um, and those are able for our teachers and students to use. We have purchased three thousand five hundred spray bottles of disinfected. And we have provided those to the teachers and for our bus drivers to have. Uh, we also have three thousand tubs of wipes. These are large tubs of wipes. They have over five hundred wipes in each tub. There, they are soaked in that same hospital-grade disinfectant that we're using elsewhere uh, throughout our schools. And they have also been provided to all of our classroom teachers and also to our bus drivers. Hand sanitizing stations. We have uh, invested in freestanding and wall-mounted hand sanitizing stations. These are put up primarily in hallways and common areas within the building, maybe like in a cafeteria or hallway, maybe right outside a restroom, somewhere like that. The freestanding are great because you can walk right in the door and, and put some up in your hands. And uh, sanitize your hands there. The wall-mounted ones, we worked with the principals to make sure that we strategically place those throughout the building. Where we know we have high densities of populations of students moving around and they could get to those easily. And we put up over a hundred and fifty of these hand sanitizing stations throughout our schools. Now, we didn't stop there. We went even a step further. We ordered over two thousand one-gallon-sized containers. Of hand sanitizers with the pumps. And we have put those in each and every classroom. So if you can't get to a sink to wash your hands, you can certainly get to one out in the hall. And if you can't get to one out of the hall, it's waiting right side in there for your classroom. So there'll be no dirty hands. Running around Hampton. So that, that'll be great. We've also haven't forgot about our bus drivers. We purchased one thousand five hundred. Eight-ounce containers of hand sanitizer because they can't use the big gallons when the bus is too large, but it's there for the bus driver to use as well. Now Hampton City Schools is focused on building a culture of shared responsibility. And this is something that we've been talking about in DLT. And sort of going at this with a team approach because there's one lesson that we've learned from COVID nineteen. Uh, has taught us not only as a city, but as a nation, that we're all in this together. There, we can't expect that one person or group can be solely responsible for the health and safety and cleanliness of our school buildings. This truly, as a school family, is a shared responsibility. So HES is committed to building a school culture where all school members are committed to doing their part in providing the healthiest school environment possible. And to that end, teachers, and this is the most important part, aged appropriate students will work together in sanitizing their own classrooms and workstations. Now that is not in lieu of the normal nightly cleaning. This is just helping to clean some of those spot areas there. So what would that look like in practice inside the classrooms? And remember, this is always led by teachers and in the control of teachers. So no matter what the setting may be, whether it's a traditional classroom setting where they're changing classes every block. Or it's a class where they're um, in there all day and the teachers are changing locations, not the students. It will be the same procedure. Time will be allowed for the teacher to lead age-appropriate students uh, in cleaning these spaces. They'll be provided with an organic base that's of that botanical disinfectant I was talking about, solution. And gloves to wipe their desk, workstation, desk shields and frequent touchpoints down. So we're all contributing to the healthiness of our school building. Now, of course, uh, if I was a parent, I'd want to know this information as well for my student. And what is the chemical makeup of this that you're, you're giving out? So we're definitely going to make sure that we have all the SDS sheets. Uh, put up on our school website so our parents can access those and see exactly what uh, is being used in the classroom. Okay? Uh, and at this time, this ends my portion of the presentation and I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Edwina Forrest, Director of Food and Nutrition Services.
Good evening, everyone. Food and Nutrition Services will be ready with grab-and-go meals and to-go meals. For our students as they returned, um, turn to their sites. Um, how will breakfast look for breakfast? Uh, there'll be a grab-and-go bag breakfast. And the bag breakfast will contain a complete meal for our students. These bags will be issued um, through our cafeteria serving line um, at breakfast kiosk or from a cart. Or directly delivered um, to our classrooms. Next slide. And for our lunch, um, we will be providing our students with a to-go container, which will have their lunch selected. Um, during this time, no food will be in any open container. So everything that we provide to the students will be. Um, contained in an individually wrapped container or in a container that we use with a covered lid. We will put these items into a bag so the students can carry their items safely to a designated, to their classroom or to a designated area for consumption. Uh, lunch will be distributed. Uh, lunch will be distributed as breakfast through our cafeteria serving line, through a kiosk or cart or direct delivery to our classroom. Um, during this time, no lunch deliveries will be accepted from the outside providers. And parents and visitors will not be allowed to eat lunch with their their child. Um, during this um time through December, the USDA has provided a waiver for us to continue our summer food service program. So the breakfast and the lunch that will be be provided to our students will be at no cost to the families. At this point, I will thank you so much and I will turn it over to Ms. Ruth in Human Resources.
Good evening. Um, as Dr. Smith at the beginning of this presentation mentioned the importance of operational capacity. Um, and John, can you flip it back one slide? Oh, never mind. Uh, the the order of the slides changed. Go ahead. All right. So thanks. So there we go. That's the slide I was expecting to see first. Sorry about that. So when it when it comes to operational capacity, um, as you can see, when we're looking at our school buildings, we are uh going to be very well-staffed. All of our classes will be covered, whether we're talking about uh classes that remain virtual or uh in-person classes. Uh, we, there are going to be a few areas where we may need to provide um some extra supports to ensure uh safety within classrooms. And we are working with ESS to provide any additional supports that may be needed. Um, an example of that would be if we have an instructional assistant who, based on medical documentation, is required to work a hundred percent virtually. Uh, that instructional assistant will continue to work with students who have opted to remain in a virtual learning environment. And if there's not somebody else within the school building that can work in that IA's classroom, we'll work with ESS to provide um um a a substitute instructional assistant. So that's an example of where um we may be providing some extra coverage. And while uh we have no issues or concerns at this point in time about coverage in the school buildings, you will notice that the numbers um look a little bit different in terms of transportation and uh food services. We do have a large number of vacancies in both of those departments right now. Uh, and we are working closely with uh both uh Ms. Forrest and Mr. Wills to get those positions filled. And one of the things, um, you know, there are probably a thousand things I love about Hampton City Schools. And one of those is the collaboration and the innovation that our administrators um are willing to show and to take. And one of the challenges that we have had in hiring bus drivers is um that we have been dependent on DMV for all of our testing. And so in the past, it has taken us five to six weeks uh from from start to finish before we're able to bring a bus driver onboard. Well, thanks to Mr. Wills, uh, within the next couple of weeks, Hampton City Schools will be one of only two school divisions in Region Two who can do all of their own testing. Um, so we uh do think that that will reduce the time it takes us to bring bus drivers onboard. Um, and I'm super excited um because the collaboration between the Transportation Department and Mr. John Eagle and his staff, um, they have worked very hard to provide all of the technology that is required for us to be able to to do the testing onsite. So I'm super excited about that. And now, John, if you will move to the next slide, Dr. Kajana. Another concern um that we have talked about uh in several meetings is that of staff options for childcare. Uh, with administrator approval, employees will be able to continue to bring school-aged children to work with them uh just as they have been doing during this all-virtual phase. Uh, we also have administrators that will be working with employees uh to provide flexible work schedules. Uh, we will be continuing to work with our community partners or community providers. And employees will also have the option, if there's appropriate documentation, uh to continue working from home. And we do, we do have some cases where we've got uh employees who have children who fall into high-risk categories and those children will be remaining virtual because of their own health conditions. And so we'll be allowing uh the employees to stay home with them. So that ends my portion on operational capacity, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kajana.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Good evening, members of the board. So looking at operational capacity, as the board is well aware, the end of June, June thirtieth, we deployed a survey to parents and really asked for for their support from a planning standpoint because we needed their feedback. So if and if and when we receive the call from the board to move forward with a modified or hybrid approach to learning, right? The in-person combination of of in-person learning or virtual, we asked our families to 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 state their preference via the survey. And we had a great, great uh respond response rate there. And so what you see on the screen here is a breakdown of of that. And so at the bottom, I'll call your attention to the very bottom of this table. HCS total fifty-one percent of our parents at this time, our families, would opt for uh when we decide to move towards a hybrid model for in-person learning, while approximately forty-nine percent would prefer to remain in a one-hundred percent virtual learning. So as as you can imagine, this data was very important to us because from a planning standpoint, if it had looked differently, for example, if we had uh seventy-five, eighty-five percent of our elementary students wanting to return in person, then it would impact the type of models or instructional model or schedules that we're able to to provide. And so uh this data was analyzed at a very deep level. For example, we broke this data. We were able to analyze it not only by division, by grade, as you see here, but down by school, drilling all the way down to the individual teacher level. And so uh these data sets were used to inform not only the master schedules, draft schedules, which I'll pull up momentarily, but also, for example, Mr. Wills, who's on the call with us this evening, our Director of Transportation, taking these same data sets and then figuring out logistically, uh what are the optimal routes uh in order for his bus drivers to take because it is not a traditional, uh perhaps re- return to school. So this, again, assessing operational capacity. So for us, as Dr. Smith mentioned at the onset of the presentation, that this evening, we're not coming before the board with a a timeline. Um, however, a a plan of action. And so as a part of this plan of action, we would propose a staged return of in-person learners. So again, if I go back to this slide here, as I'm going through the stages, keep in mind, if you have a high school with fourteen hundred students in a traditional model, we're talking about seven hundred students coming back in Phase Two, that Phase Two of our of our return-to-school learning plan. So when you look at these stages, please, uh, I would ask that you please keep that in mind. So for Stage One, uh really three groups of students here, so beginning with our our vulnerable student groups in grades pre-K through twelve. And those would be primarily students with disabilities who are served in a self-contained setting, as well as English language learners. And as you can see, we have a qualifier there, select students, uh for example, with disabilities and select English language learners. So for English language learners, we know that they have different levels of of where they are in an English proficiency. And so in that case, the criteria would be levels one and two as far as students with English language learners. And then for uh students with disabilities, Ms. Judge is joining us this evening as well, our Director of Special Education, who worked with her team to create a list of criteria, and we have that for you this evening. Uh, if during the Q and A session, you're interested in seeing that. But primarily, one of the big ones is that if you, as a student, spend seventy-five percent or greater of your day in a self-contained setting, uh you would qualify as a part of that Stage One reentry. And again, pre-K through three, all students, so regardless of English language learners, students with disabilities, regular education students, all students pre-K through three, with the exception of those students who want to remain virtual. And I would say that also for the vulnerable populations, we do obviously have those who have families that have indicated they would prefer to stay in virtual. So again, even in Stage One, uh that option would be available to them. And then you see somewhat of a staggered entry, right? So at the elementary level, we're bringing back a fairly large group of students, approximately half of the students. And then in grades six and nine, so middle school, we would propose to bring back one grade in Stage One. And in high school, one grade in 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 high school. And of course, when we've talked about some of the mitigation strategies this evening, protocols, measures in place, as an elementary principal, I would want some time to make sure bus schedules are working, cafeteria, arrival dismissal procedures. And then for Stage Two, I would be able to bring back the remaining students. And so that's what we're uh proposing here in the staged reentry. So middle school, high school, same thing, start with one group and then slowly bring more students back. Now, I say slowly, and it it could be that the the will of the board is a week from one stage to another. It could be two weeks. It could vary by level. It could vary based on the metrics, and some of those will, Dr. Smith will share a little bit later on. But uh anyhow, there's no timeline set here as well, uh just a breakdown of the the stages of of reentry. So let's take a look at some of the instructional models. We'll start with pre-K. We'll go to elementary, middle, and high. So the pre-K schedule, you saw that the data by grade level I just displayed not too long ago. And approximately seventy-five percent of our pre-K students, and and you would, you would, you would guess that, pre-K and kindergarten are our highest two percentages of who wants to return to in-person learning. Uh, while we are being successful in a virtual model at that at that age, many of us would prefer for our children uh four, five, six years old to be in an in-person setting. And so uh as you know, uh, board members, we have a cap on our class sizes at the pre-K level of eighteen students. So in this case, we'll use the example of twelve students wanting to come in person, six staying home virtually. So the in-person learners would come to school Monday and Wednesday. On Tuesday and Thursday, the virtual learners would engage with their teacher via Zoom, which is what we're doing now. And then on Friday, the teacher would have the opportunity to get together virtually with both sets of students. So you'll see some language down here at the bottom. One of those is uh the definition or term of asynchronous learning. So uh we we define that as when students are asked to complete work on their own outside of the time spent with teachers. So on Mondays and Wednesdays for those in-person learners, uh they'll kind of get their marching orders with assignments the previous day from their teachers. And so on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the in-person learners will be asked to work on some uh independent assignments or even with their parents uh at home on on those assignments. And the same thing, asynchronous days would be on Monday and Wednesday for the virtual group of learners. You'll notice also the times are a little bit different, and these are estimated as far as uh start times. Again, Mr. Wills, as far as a hard start time of the day and a hard end time of the day. Uh, those could vary by elementary school based on transportation and 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 again, with reduced numbers of students being permitted to ride buses. Uh, him, him and his team, uh he and his team configuring routes. However, the on-campus learning for pre-K does take into account lunch. It takes into account recess and as well as when the students travel to resource such as art. And so the next stage after this evening, the members of the curriculum instruction and assessment team for each of these schedules will be taking these minutes that we're proposing and drafting what it would look like from an instructional day standpoint. So for example, the three Rs, how much of the time allotted from eight to two would be dedicated to English language arts and and mathematics? And 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 so on, when we look at the 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 days of the week there. So that's a, that's a pre-K opportunity for for a schedule there. Uh, one of the things we heard when the executive directors, uh I want to thank Dr. Haynes for his leadership, Dr. Owens as well, and school principals who who really had uh a a large stake in the say of how our schedules were created. They said, you know, uh, one of the things we want to ensure that students, number one, uh are 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 able to stay with their current school. And so we don't have students uh working with teachers from another school, whether it's virtually or not. And the second thing, where at all possible, we want students to have the teachers they have now. Uh, they were really emphatic about the relationships, only approximately four and a half weeks in, but are very strong, and we've heard that from from parents as well. And so we are pleased with these schedules to to be able to to move in that direction. So taking a look at elementary, I mentioned that the in-depth data analysis, would like to thank Linda Linda Dietz for her expertise in this area. And what we were able to do is is we were able to to determine by school at the elementary level, by grade level, by teacher, can we make it work where elementary teachers would would really have one prep in that you would have a an elementary teacher on a two-person team, for example, who's strictly teaching in-person learners, and then another teacher strictly teaching virtual learners. So we have, as you know, two, three, four, five teachers on a grade level in a school. This is an example with two teachers. And so Teacher A is working with two groups of in-person learners. She'll see one group on Monday, Wednesday. She'll see another group on Tuesday, Thursday. And then on Friday, that teacher will get together virtually with both groups. Uh, similarly, when you look at Teacher B, she's meeting with two groups of virtual learners. And in this case, we're able to meet five days a week with virtual learners. As another part of this planning, what we did with the principals, the executive directors and 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 the team uh who came up with these schedules, we took a look at the minutes. So how many minutes are they currently getting in Phase One of instructional minutes? How many minutes are they currently getting? Uh, how many minutes would they get in Phase Two? How many minutes do they get in in a traditional setting? And so uh, you know, for example, when you look at these schedules here, maybe you're asking, well, what's the difference? Will the minutes actually FaceTime with teacher, and that's a combination of in-person and virtual or all-virtual here? Nine hundred minutes. So regardless of if you're going three days a week, two in-person, one virtual, or five days a week here, the instructional minutes are the same. That allows us, of course, to stay with curriculum pacing, and so the students are are exposed to the same expectation or our curriculum in the in assessment. Again, actual start times may vary. I'll use an example of a lot of our our middle schools, teacher average to student-to-teacher ratio, uh somewhere around twenty-two to one.
Dr. Kajana, we're losing uh your your audio.
Okay, how's that, Dr. Smith?
Better. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. So at the middle school level, if you have approximately twenty-four students in a classroom, let's take a language arts classroom, and you have fifty percent wanting virtual, fifty percent wanting in-person. In this case, I would work with uh twelve of my students in person Monday, Wednesday. I would work with the other twelve students virtually Tuesday, Thursday. And then on Friday, it would be an opportunity to bring the entire class together. At the middle school, currently, we're meeting with all twenty-four students at the same time virtually. The other thing is in Phase One, currently, we we're meeting four, four classes a day, four sixty-minute classes a day. In this case, we would increase by fifteen minutes per class. So the minutes in Phase Two would equal the minutes they're currently receiving in Phase One. And what the administrators really like about this schedule is now we're actually cutting the student-to-teacher ratio down in half. So on Monday, I'm only meeting with twelve students as opposed to twenty-four now, and uh same thing would hold true on Tuesday. Then we come back together as 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 a class on on Fridays. At the high school level, you know, one of the the challenges we face is, and I think it's a great thing, is that we offer students eight classes over the course of two days. And so because of our academies, the model we run is we have four classes one day and then another four classes the next day. And in some divisions, for example, uh you might have uh four classes the first semester for the second semester. So one of the the critical factors in looking at the high school schedule is what gives us the 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 most amount of minutes FaceTime with the teacher. And so the the model we came up with actually increased significantly uh the number of minutes. Right now, high school students are getting nine hundred and sixty minutes virtually with their students. And in this case, the model would account for one thousand four hundred and fifty-six minutes with their teachers. In this case, you see going going four days a week. So what we're proposing at the high school level is we would operate a traditional school day. So uh the bells that we operate under traditionally, uh under that model, we would run Monday through Thursday. So if I'm in person, uh the experience would look like this. Um, I would have, let's say, fifteen students who are in person in the classroom, and you've got a a teacher in the front. If I'm virtually, I'm I'm zooming into the same classroom in this case. And so what that would look like would be the students in the classroom would be on their computers. The teacher would have the computer in front of him or her in the classroom on Zoom. And the students at home would be zooming into the classroom. So with this model, we're also, again, traditional day, so looking at ninety-minute blocks. So sometimes you can imagine a teacher like you are right now, kind of a captive audience, engaged in direct instruction. And so you would have both the in-person learners and virtual learners paying attention to the the teacher at that time. And then in some cases, it could be based on that ninety minutes and how we structured that in a given classroom, that the teacher is working uh strictly with in-person learners at this time, while virtual learners are working on something independently. And then uh vice versa for another portion of the block. So we also believe that this this schedule provides some benefits beyond the pandemic. In the case of homebound students, for example, particularly at the high school level, sometimes it's difficult to find content teachers for uh a homebound students, as well as the the attraction perhaps for even some some students who are currently have opted for for homeschool. So that is the model at the the high school level. At this point, uh I will go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ms. Goral, who's going to talk uh to you in reference to the communication plan for the division.
Unmute my sound. All right. Um, good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the School Board in our Hampton community. Um, as you know, a communication plan is a roadmap for getting our message delivered to our audience, which is our administrative team, teachers, staff, students, parents, and guardians, as well as our community and our stakeholders. And that is an essential tool for ensuring that we are sending clear, specific messages via multiple avenues. So as we plan to transition to modified in-person learning, um, here are some examples of the key communications that we've developed or are currently developing. Um, the first bullet on this slide is in reference to our protocol expectation documents. Um, Dr. Smith actually referenced these expectations at the beginning of his presentation. We have gone ahead and created one-pagers for each of these expectations and placed these on our Fall Return-to-School Plan website under the quick links dropdown at the top of that website. under the quick links dropdown at the top of that website. These protocols have also been shared with all of our administrators with the expectation to share these with their staff so that everybody is on that same plan of communication. Our second bullet on this slide, I'll draw your attention to HCS has had a robust YouTube channel for several years now. So as part of our communication plan, we have created an actual playlist titled HCS Fall 2020 Need to Know so that families can easily find videos that we are creating that provide information about our current supports as we are in this virtual setting as well as information as we transition to modified in-person learning protocols. So our current videos right now, samples of them is a school supply distribution that we've done for families, our meal pickup distribution, some, the supports we have for serving students with disabilities in a virtual setting, even just down to how to wear face masks covering properly. We are currently working on the expectations for face coverings, the daily well checks, those that Dr. Smith referenced earlier. Again, we've already created the one-pagers that is housed on our website and these videos will just be in addition to that communication. Next slide, please. On this slide, the first bullet references a document that I believe Ms. Gill has also spoken to. This is our healthy and safe return to school communication guidance for positive COVID-19 cases. This was actually created prior to even our teachers returning back at the end of the summer. This booklet is located on our website. It's updated as needed. We just updated it again this week as we received new information from our health department. So that's a key communication tool. Also as part of our communication plan, as Dr. Smith referenced, we've held an all administrators meeting. This is not the first all administrators meeting as we do this consistently to keep everybody abreast of, of all the information that's going on, especially during, you know, our virtual start. But we held one presently today to talk about the present structures and the protocols that we have in place for our modified in-person learning. We continue to update our return to school plan website with pertinent information. And we also continue to communicate with our staff and families via robocalls and emails as we're providing information on resources that are there for them, meal distribution and pertinent updates. And as a part of our transitioning to modified in-person learning, we will host a virtual staff workshop for our HCS teachers and staff. We did this this summer. It was very successful where we allowed staff to sign up. We gave them a brief presentation, kind of like we are with you all tonight to review, you know, just what the new expectations and protocols are. But it gives them the opportunity then to ask questions of division leadership team members and directors, you know, that we try to hit all the key points, but they may just have questions that are pertinent to them. We're also planning on hosting virtual parent workshops. The IPL team has done some great ones as far as how to work with Zoom and setting up your parent portal. But this particular workshop will actually be specific to transitioning to modified in-person instruction. And it will again, review information that you're basically receiving tonight. So we can go over schedules, protocols and answer any questions our families may have. So at this time, I'm going to pass the presentation back to Dr. Smith to discuss in-person learning metrics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goral. So now we'll give some attention to the in-person learning metrics as, as Ms. Goral indicated. And so as you're aware from the board meeting, I think on September the 16th, we had a representative from the Hampton Peninsula Health Districts who really provided information from the aspect and the lens of the Virginia Department of Health, the pandemic metrics there. But also this evening, we'll talk a little bit about the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, CDC, and the indicators there for school decision, decision-making. And then within that context of CDC, the key mitigation strategies that they've asked us to consider. And many of those particular strategies you heard this evening either from Nurse Glory Gill or from Dr. Dan Bowling, our chief operating officer and so forth, relative to the mitigation strategies that, that, and protocols that we have in place, along with information that Ms. Goral presented as well. And then the operational capacity. Certainly that's very important as we consider and give thought to an in-person modified return to learning. So the next slide, please. You'll recall that on September the 16th, when the board was provided with information from the Virginia Department of Health, the pandemic metrics there. One of the things that they highlighted and we certainly share that we would have as the backdrop for a part of our decision-making because you can have all of the processes and structures and systems or an excellent action plan in place, but we also need to give attention to what we know, the metrics, what, what they are. And so it was indicated that we should look for a decrease in the trend of at least 14 days in the case incidence rate per 100,000. At the time on September the 16th, when the information was presented to the board then, Hampton's cases had been increasing for nine days. And then the percent of case incidence rate per 100,000, as they indicated, should be certainly below 10% that threshold. On September the 16th, our case incidence rate per 100,000 was really at 10%. And then the positivity rate per 100,000, it was indicated that we should consider that it should be below 10%. And that was the only metric at the time that we were meeting because our positivity rate was at 5.8%. When you, when you talk about the positivity rate per 100,000, you're talking about at a given time, the number of individuals who were tested for COVID-19 and how many on that particular day were determined to be positive. That's the positivity rate. When you think of the case incidence rate per 100,000, you take into consideration at any given time on today, how many individuals tested positive. And so it does not take into consideration the number of tests and so forth. So that's really from a layman's perspective, the difference between the two. If I get into trouble, Nurse Gill will get me out of that this evening in terms of the science. The next slide, please. I do want to say that since that time, when the information was presented to the board, it's very fluid. As we all know, the Virginia Department of Health really revised its pandemic metrics. And so at this particular point, the Virginia Department of Health, they're considering the four areas here. The percent change in the number of cases per 100,000 population during the last seven days compared to the previous seven days and the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied. And then the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region that are occupied by patients with COVID-19. And then of course, the last indicator here that the Virginia Department of Health will be considering as well. Next slide. When we take into consideration the three areas that, that we presented and that was shared on September the 16th, and we use that same data as it relates to Hampton in particular, you'll note the change that Hampton has been decreasing for the past 14, 14 days. And so that's, that's important for us to consider. And also when we look at the percent of case incidents per 100,000, the fact that it should be below the 10% threshold, Hampton is currently or was on October the 5th at 9%. The positivity rate per 100,000, as indicated, should be at below 10%. And currently as of October the 5th, I should say, our positivity rate was at 7.9%. So that's important. Now, one of the things that we have been advised as of September the 25th, that school divisions should really take in, into consideration not only the information from the Virginia Department of Health, but that really schools should use the CDC indicators of dynamic school decision-making. And that we should use that as our framework, as our core framework and those core indicators there to help us inform our decision-making relative to when it might be the right time for us to move forward for some kind of modified in-person instruction or learning or otherwise, whether it should remain virtual. So when we look at the data from CDC based upon their decision-making indicators as of September the 8th, that was when school opened, our first day of school, the virtual 100%, the total number of new cases per 100,000 individuals within the last 14 days for Hampton was 131.8, which was at a higher risk for us. And when we look at the percentage of RT-PCR, the actual test that's administered for COVID-19, in terms of whether it was positive during the last 14 days for Hampton, we were at 8.5%. So we were in the higher risk category. So again, when school opened in terms of our 100% virtual, our return to school on September the 8th, you'll note that we were certainly in the higher risk categories there. Where do we currently reside? When we look at the data as of October the, the 6th, you can see that as it relates to the number of new cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days for Hampton, you can see that we're at 79.66, which is still in the higher risk category. However, the percentage of RT-PCR tests that are positive during the last 14 days for Hampton is at 4.2%, which is in the lower risk category. And then our ability as a school division, as a part of the CDC, those mitigation strategies are very important within each school division. And we believe that our ability in terms of a school division to implement the five mitigation strategies outlined within CDC that we fall within the lower to the lowest risk cat, risk categories there. So that gives you some indication when we take the Virginia Department of Health information and when we also now take the CDC indicators and use that as guidance for our decision-making as to when it might be the right time to return for the modified in-person instructional delivery model in Hampton City Schools. So as noted here on this particular slide, we have seen considerable improvement in both of the CDC core indicators as well as the secondary indicators for, from the Virginia Department of Health. And so what has been recommended by the Virginia Department of Health that we would use CDC as the, as the primary and those indicators, the core indicators there and that the information now from the Virginia Department of Health would be secondary. So a lot of progress in that area from early September, certainly to early October, when we take both the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health indicators and the metrics into consideration. Of course, and my final comment in this area that we have access certainly to the data, the data on a daily basis, and we will continue to track and monitor this particular data and, and, and provide updates as, as necessary. Okay? I think that's it in terms of the information as it relates to school opening. And I want to thank all of the members of the team for their hard work, individuals who presented, but also so many others who are working in the background and who have worked in the background to ensure that we have a strong action plan, that we have the structures that are in place. But again, we have to also give attention to the science and those indicators to, as a part of our decision-making process. Mr. Chairman, that ends the school opening updates.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. And, and I do also want to thank all the presenters this evening, but also the, the army of people that are behind all those presenters. This presentation clearly shows an immense amount of thoughtfulness and attention to detail. At this time, I will ask board members if they have any questions for Dr. Smith or any of the presenters? Anyone? All right. Oh, yes. Ms. Cherry.
Well, thank you, Chairman Kilgore, for allowing me to ask my questions. So Dr. Smith, this has, this was a very thoughtful and detailed report. But as it relates to the, the indicators from the incidents and positive, you shared the percentage rate. Is there a way that you can also share the actual numbers?
Yep. And let me yield to Nurse Gill. I think that she will be able to respond more appropriately to that.
In general, yes, sir. I think that we can give you some basic numbers. It just depends upon what sources we get from CDC. But yes, now that we're switching to CDC as our primary, I believe that we can give actual numbers on some information, but I, I'd hate to say absolutely 100%, but I believe that we can.
Okay. So, so how soon would you be able to ascertain that data?
Well, actually, if you'll give me a few minutes, I might be able to do that soon.
Oh, perfect.
And if, if it's okay, Mr. Samuel, just to allow Nurse Gill the opportunity to make sure that, that it's accurate. Follow up, then we'll, we'll provide that through the chair and then, and then to all members of the board. Okay?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so my next question, and it's for Nurse Gill. As it relates to the health protocols, the safety measures that you mentioned, there was no mention of doing any temperature check of children who may be transported on the buses or who enter the school building. Is there a reason why we're not doing temp check?
Yes, sir. Initially, when I talked about this with the school board, I did mention that, but I'll reinforce it here. The problem in general with doing that is you have, for instance, let's start with just your, your question about the buses. If I was to stop every student to get onto the bus, first of all, we probably would not get, get to school on time. But also what are we going to do with students who, for whatever reason, the parent is not present, they've already left, dropped them off at the bus stop and left? What are we going to do with that student if they cannot get on the bus? And so to ensure that whatever students are getting on the bus, we make sure that they all have face masks. Cause it's the droplets that we're concerned about. And so therefore with the face masks on, we have a better chance of protecting all those that are on the bus. Secondly, a side note to that is temperatures can be fluctuating. All I have to do is take either a Tylenol or a Motrin or an aspirin, and I have now lowered that temperature to where it's acceptable to get on the bus. The other thing, and I will say just in this building, when I came, it was hot outside and I did the temperature check here in our building, I had to wait five different checks to finally get my temperature where it was normal because it was so hot outside. I had, I was a 101.9 and then I went down to 100 and then I went to or less, a little higher than 100. I mean, it just kept seeming in the process. So that delay would have delayed, well, it delayed me 20 minutes, but it would have delayed, can you imagine, the students? So that's one of the primary reasons why I chose or suggested that we not do temperature checks. The other thing is that again, when you're coming in from a cold area or a hot area, and especially on the buses, they have a very few are actually air-conditioned. So it's going to be warm on there or it's going to be very cold. And again, it affects the temperature. And those scanners, if you've ever been into one of the doctor's office, sometimes they have to do it three times to get a average of what those temperatures are. Again, that takes time with their face masks on. And that's why we're stressing that the face masks be on in every single child. When they do that initial screening in the classroom, we have a better chance of having them fully assessed. Because if I just, if I had only taken my temperature, where would I be net right at that time after I finished? Because if I just, if I had only taken my temperature, where would I be net right at that time after I finished taking the hundred and one nine temperature? I would be home. Because that's that's what happens when we do just the temperature. But when we do a thorough check, and one of your blessings for having nurses in your buildings is that they can do a thorough assessment of that student. And probably save the parent from having to pick them up. Because we've done a thorough check and we can say, no, you're fine, you can go back to class. Or in fact, truly, you are not well and you need to go home and and we can advise the parent properly. But the biggest concern from a best standpoint is I do not want bus drivers to have to say to a child, you can't come on my bus because your temperature is this high. And we're not going to stand there and make sure that it isn't, you know, for several times before that happens. Does that make sense in general why we're not doing that?
Yeah, that makes sense, and so my follow-up question to that, once teachers and or administrator administer that safety protocol check in the classroom. And if it is determined that a child may be exhibiting some symptoms of flu-like symptoms. And that child is then sent to the the care location, the care location. So what if we have a large number of students that particular morning? Do you believe that you will have adequate staffing to deal with if you have like more than ten or so student that. Shows like flu-like symptoms?
I think that's a very good question, and many times during our flu season, we could have that many people showing up at our our clinic at any one time. What we have asked as part of the training up of our teachers is that those minor issues. We've provided first aid bags and things like that to their areas. So that if you had a little, a tooth came out, or if you had a little boo-boo that needed a Band-Aid or. Some some simple things that they can handle at the at the classroom level, then we're not having them come down for those kind of things. Only those that are sick as well as or needing assessment. And those that need medications would be the initial in the morning. And so most of the staff members are being informed to realize that the morning will be our critical time on doing those assessments. And the other thing is probably at the very beginning, we will be busy because we're also educating. You know, this is, this is something you have all the time because it's your allergies or this is your asthma and you know that that's fine. Because kids, especially with being out so long, you know, they they do need that attention. And so we know it's going to be busy at the beginning, but I think as we educate and we have. The teachers are also in virtual mode, they're teaching a little bit about what to expect and what what questions will be asked. I think we're well preparing kids to be ready for that. But it it will be busy and and I know that. At least in my experience, both as being in the schools as well as us preparing for students to come in is that we have some backup if we need it. We've trained our medical designees, so if we need somebody to help with temperature checks while we're doing something else, that can be done. And I and I and I know that my principal, the administrators will definitely support, you know, ensuring that our kids are are. Quickly handled, but handled appropriately and handled with care.
Okay, fantastic, that's good to know. And so I I have two more questions, Chairman Kilgore, so I'm just going to be very fast. So my second, my my third question is for Dr. Cagiano. So in this report, there was no mention of students that are enrolled in the New Horizon program. And so are there any conversation with the director of New Horizon as it relates to? Students scheduling, staff availability and so forth? And how does their schedule aligns with Hampton City School schedule?
Yeah. I can take that, Mr. Samuel.
Okay, you're you're on mute, Dr. Cagiano.
And so, as you know, with New Horizons, there are a number of school divisions that are. Served through that particular center. And so once we outline our specific plan or plans, then we share that with Mr. Casey Roberts. The Executive Director at New Horizons. And then Mr. Roberts, along with members of his team, they then develop schedules. And so I have been in contact with Mr. Roberts and certainly provided follow-up to one of your earlier questions as well. In terms of, you know, ensuring that the schedule is not so late in in the day. Evenings and so forth, so at this particular point. Mr. Roberts will be meeting with the superintendents of school divisions that participate in New Horizons. And will work through schedules at that level.
Okay, thank you for that, and then Dr. Smith, you should, you should, this question could also, you should be able to or would be able to answer this. Although he was not mentioned in the report. I I have some thoughts about our our current model, which is virtual learning. So and as it relates to the McKinney-Vento program that we had, which is a federal funded program. And so I want to make sure that equity is equally distributed for those, our students and in the homeless that are homeless. Because they are some of our most vulnerable population, they're very transient, they're in pop. Sometimes in location that may not have access to wifi and and so forth. So my question is, so what are we doing as a school division to ensure that there's some sort of kind of equity? In place for our homeless population, because ability from the last report, we had over two hundred and eighty students that were considered homeless.
I know that you appreciate this, Mr. Samuel, that of course, we have some very strong social workers. And so social workers are assigned as case managers with young people who are accessing services via the McKinney-Vento. And so they are assigned a case manager. And as you know, very well know that the relationship between the social worker and the families, that relationship is so very important. And so social workers are working through areas such as internet connectivity, but not only internet connectivity. To make certain that technological resources are available. When we are in person, we address transportation. But also our social workers work alongside administrators to help families to access. Other services in our community as well. And we don't operate from the assumption that a young person or family who might be homeless. That there are specific services that they need. It is through that relationship and that assessment that we make that determination. And then an appropriate follow-up can be made based upon that assessment. But again, the relationship between our school, social workers and the families. That relationship is so very important. And it's working quite well, as you know, under the leadership of Dr. Copeland and and other in in the department.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Smith, for your due diligence and addressing. Because that's a conversation that you and I had on yesterday and earlier today, so I greatly appreciate it. And Chairman Kilgore, those that end my questions, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel, Ms. Cherry, you had some questions.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Making sure I'm not on mute. First of all, I wanted to give kudos to Dr. Smith and the other presenters tonight and the people behind the presentation. This was a seriously detailed presentation for a serious situation, which is. How do we keep students and staff safe during a pandemic? And I'm especially pleased, Dr. Smith, that even in the beginning of your presentation. And your fellow staff member said as well, that you're looking at a successful transition. When it is appropriate to do so. And I think that speaks to the safety issue. And it came off across to me as a board member that safety is the number one concern. Even with the rubrics that you use with CDC and with the Virginia Department of Health. I would like to just mention that in looking at what was presented tonight. Not only was it clear, it was trustworthy information. And I think that's important because one of the things you talked about, Dr. Smith, was the fact that. People have to have confidence in this division. And I think when you look at the process that you have used, even without dates, the process that you have used. Where you've looked at the data to make decisions, where you've looked at guidance from others. And where you have put so many safety issues in place, I think that is to be highly commended. I do think that while we don't have a date, I think we have all kind of stolen Coach Carter's comment. When it says stay ready so you don't have to get ready. And I think that's what this plan does with the stages. I would therefore recommend, however, and I'm not sure how fellow board members feel about this. But I would recommend that whatever we do, whatever stage we look at, whatever phase we began with. That we not do it until after we have finished the virtual learning for the first nine weeks. And I make that recommendation because that is what we had said to this community. And I know you, Dr. Smith, among other people, are very, very concerned about making sure. That whatever we say to this community, they can take to the bank. And secondly, that's what this board voted on. That we would look at virtual learning through the first nine weeks, which is the top of November. And then we would reassess and move from there, where the reassessment looks like. Not only has it already taken place, but it continues to evolve because it is a fluid situation. Again, I'm not sure how other board members would weigh in on that, but I think it's key that if we voted on. Having virtual through November, the top of November, which is the first nine weeks. That we continue on that trajectory because so much changes. In a quick time, we talk about, we don't know what we don't know. Who would have known ten days ago that we would have our commander in chief and his wife test positive for coronavirus? Right before we came on the air, I got a tweet that William and Mary has shut down all of its athletic activities. Due to a coronavirus positive cases. So I love the fact, Dr. Smith, that you're working with CDC, that you're working with Virginia Department of Health to assess as we move along. But I do think and would like to recommend that we keep on the trajectory we are on for virtual learning. Until we get to the end of the first nine weeks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cherry. Yes, Dr. Mason.
I want to echo the sentiments from from Ms. Cherry. And I I don't think it's it's no secret that I'm I'm not an advocate of rushing this thing in terms of returning back to school. When we talk about every child, every day, whatever it takes, we have to think about every child. And that's including that small percentage that the CDC may say, oh, there's a small percentage that may get COVID. You know, we have to think about those children as well, and so we can't play numbers with lives, in my opinion. And so I I cannot support anything in terms of going back to school, you know, in a rushed capacity. I really think we need to continue to do this. I think, Dr. Smith, and that team, you guys have worked very hard in terms of putting all of this together as far as stages. And I think as we continue to go along, I think more information is going to come out in terms of how we can even add to those stages and implement. You know, the process that you have in place to implement. But I think rushing this thing is definitely not the answer. And I think as we watch what happens over the next few weeks, especially as cold and flu season begins to set in. And we know how much, you know, when we talk about keeping cold, you know, cold and flu situation. Or, you know, at a at a low level within the schools, we know that's a challenge. And so that's the same thing I I feel will happen when we talk about bringing kids back prematurely. Looking at this COVID situation, I won't give you the, you know, use example I gave you Doc, Dr. Smith about the bathrooms. But I I think you know where I'm going with that, but I think we we really need to take our time. We really need to take our time and just be comfortable, you know. I know I know parents are a little frustrated right now because that 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 Common Core math is 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 a challenge for them, you know. I always tell folks, I I was helping my son carry the one when he was in school and he was trying to do that ladder stuff and I was just confused. So I had to get some help for him, but I know it's confusing, but if they just bear with us for for just a little bit longer. We want to make sure that everything, we're doing the best possible things that we can do to keep our kids safe. And that's all of our kids safe, I think we can get them through this. And and as I said, you know, we can't graduate kids who are in the cemetery. And and this thing is killing some of our children across the country. And I just don't want that to be the impact that it has on Hampton City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mason. Other board members? Questions? Ms. Cherry?
Yeah, just one, Dr. Mason made me think of something when he was speaking. With regard to the numbers, I believe that some of our numbers have declined because we did what we were asked to do. Which was stay home. Don't be around a lot of folk. And I think that's why some of our numbers have declined. And I I just caution us to not rush in, as Dr. Mason said. And then see this, see this increase. I do like the process, I do think it's a well-laid out plan. And I think as we move forward, when you look at stages. And, Dr. Smith, you know, you and I have done presentations for Virginia School Board Association on staying in your lane. I think the academic stages, they speak to your lane, not the board's lane. But I think overall, we should all pretty much be on the same page. And I would like to ask Dr. Boland a question if I could.
Absolutely.
And I don't need to see the charts back up or anything, but, Dr. Boland, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, there you are. You had indicated when you were giving your presentation that. We're all in this together and that this has to be a collaborative effort and a shared responsibility. With that said, that configuration you were talking about of disinfectant. That will kill COVID in four hours?
No, four minutes.
Four minutes?
Four minutes?
Yes. Could you share that with the NFL? Because I am so tired of games being postponed, I don't know what to do, so you gotta let them know about your secret. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry, again. Do we have any questions from our student rep, Mr. Karnak?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kilgore. First of all, Dr. Bowling, Nurse Gil, I'm very pleasantly surprised and very glad to hear what you all had to say tonight. That, you know, the hospital grade disinfectant, that is really important stuff. And we absolutely have to make sure from an operations, excuse me, maintenance perspective, that our schools are safe. We have to take every measure possible, I'm glad to hear that we're doing that. To switch gears, Dr. Cagiano, this was your part of the presentation, so I ask you. But, Dr. Smith, you can redirect this question as necessary. But I want to draw your attention to the high school schedule, or yeah, that slide right there. So for the sample Friday schedule for office hours and remediation, is that going to be all virtual like it is now? Or will students have the opportunity to go in in person and conduct office hours with their teachers?
Great question, yes, great question, Mr. Karnak, yes. So on on Fridays, you see their office hours and remediation, similar to what we're doing now. And that would be the opportunity really for both, whether it's a virtual remediation and or in-person remediation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good question.
I did have a couple of questions, Dr. Cagiano, could you go to the slide that shows Phase Two stages, please? I just, I want to be clear. So Stage One has three bullets underneath it. When we go to at what, at some point, Phase Two, Stage One. Those three bullets come back all at one time or at different times?
What we're proposing right now is that these would all come back at the same time. So for example, in your elementary schools, pre-K through three students would come back at the same time. Again, keeping in mind, we're looking at approximately fifty percent of those of that population coming back. And then in the middle school, one grade would come back, and then the high school, one grade would come back.
Okay, okay.
And then also, you know, six, obviously, pre-K through twelve, that first bullet. You would have seventh graders, eighth graders, fourth graders, fifth graders who fell into that vulnerable student group population.
Okay, excellent. My other quick question was just related to face mask. And this is probably a Dr. Bowling, Ms. Gil question, and I don't, I don't need the presentation anymore. But my question is, since they're going to get their face mask that we're giving them for the first time when they come to school. I'm assuming we're we're expecting them to come, for the bus riders to come to the bus stop. Wearing a face mask or on that day one, we're going to have disposable. wearing a face mask or on that day one, we're going to have disposable ones to give them.
We do have disposable ones on the bus, but we're also in the communication that we send out is that we're saying to parents, not only do they need to be wearing face masks at all times unless you have a medical uh, reason for not wearing it and you, we need the appropriate documentation, but also, uh, but we have the backup on the bus and just in case that happens. And then a lot of the schools have already started saying, you know, as part of the school supplies, it would not uh, hurt to have at least two backups because, you know, all it takes is one big sneeze and then that, that, that face mask is done. So um, have some backups as well. I, I, I believe because we've been doing this since March, so many people are so used to doing that anyway. It's not like we're, we're going from March to April and April, we're bringing back students where they may not be used to that. I think by now with our society, they've gotten a lot more comfortable with wearing this. I'm not saying that everybody has, but in general, I think that we're well educated uh, just as a population on that. So I think that uh, the, the point with the masks um, is that they have the logos and so kids are going to be more inclined to want to wear it because it's cool. You know, it's different, it's not the, the, whatever their parents maybe have gotten that are plain or or maybe some have some special ones, but they've got their own logo. So that gives them a uniqueness to their school and, and that's what we're hoping that that one additional um, mask would look like they have something. But we do have the backups and that's important because let's just say things do happen and uh, people forget their book bags in their back, in their backpack was the book, the face mask. So we've got the backups on the bus.
Thank you. Um, and in line with Cherry said about the fact that we don't have a timeline for when this would uh, when uh, Phase Two would start, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna also recommend to, to board members that um, that we, when we do authorize the superintendent and his staff to roll out the various stages, we authorize it in a way that provides them the flexibility to ensure lessons learned can be effectively incorporated, that the departments um, have sufficient time between stages to prepare and adjust as required from those lessons learned. And that we, we have enough time between stages that real-time CDC and, and health department metrics like the, the new dynamic school decision-making metrics um, can be used in the deciding, decision makes, making process. So the, the time between Stage One and Stage Two may be different than the time between Stage Two and Stage Three. And I think giving them that flexibility will be important when we finally do uh, go to Phase Two. So. Anyway. Yes, Dr. Mace?
Well, just two things and now, and it's good to hear you echo that because one of the things I did suggest in talking with um, Dr. Cagiano and Dr. Smith was the, you know, at least a minimum of two weeks in terms of being able to collect the data, analyze the data and make some type of decision versus that a one-week window of time between each of the stages when we get to that point. Um, the other thing, um, I'm not sure if Dr. Smith had an opportunity to speak to Dr. Bowling about the, the um, the machines, I was saying how to spray the hall, hallways down in between classes and, and things like that or whatever that I've seen uh, some of the different businesses take advantage of. Um, as far as an opportunity for us to utilize those types of machines between classes, because I know especially at the middle school and high school level, when the students are changing classes in the hallways, you're going to have, you know, the opportunity um, for more um, airborne uh, situations to occur and to be able to clean those things, you know, to purify that air pretty quickly is definitely going to be um, an asset. The other piece, just real quick in terms of just the, the face mask protocol and working with the families and the students, um, are we going to talk to them or explain them about cleaning the face mask versus wearing the same mask day after day? Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Dr. Ma, Dr. Mason. And also I would, uh, just a comment about the cleaning of the hallways. Here's my con, only concern is that given that it is hospital grade, um, where he is doing that is, and, and Dr. Bowling can chime in, maybe I'm off base a little bit, but uh, what we do want to be careful is we have children that potentially could have allergies and things like that. And so I would, would say that um, unless you have, I mean, because kids are, the students are going to be wearing masks as they're going around. So the droplets, unless they're taking them off and talking, in general, shouldn't be there. Um, uh, I mean, in, in large quantity because they should be keeping those masks on. But to spray them in between classes is my concern. Um, granted, they, they, they are hos, you know, they're hospital grade, but they're also, you know, conducive. We can put them in the schools. But I would recommend that maybe we look at, obviously Dr. Bowling can mention that, uh, talk about it, but uh, that we not do it while the students are in the building.
One of the problems that you have with the atomizers or the electrostatic sprayers is that the mist is so fine uh, that comes out, it's suspended in the air for long periods of time. Uh, another issue is with the strength of the cleaners that are used since they're hospital grade. You have to be very, very careful about inhalation, breathing that into uh, your respiratory system because it has some severe health effects that could be almost immediate with that. Uh, the use of those devices requires an N95 mask uh, and goggles. And of course, um, when the kids are in the hall, if we start spraying that large scale while they're uh, it could still float under the doors, through windows, and then when students come out in the hall to get water or go to the restroom or something, they could be exposed to that and that would create another uh, health issue. So when we do a lot of that type of spraying, we like to do it after school. Um, when there's nobody in the building, a sub other custodians and we can quickly and heavily go through and spray the entire building without any risk of exposure to anyone.
And, and, and with it, I would say if, if that's the case, then we need to come up with something because for someone who's had COVID and, and really trying to figure out where we got it. Because I've been very careful. You know, wearing my mask, using my hand sanitizer, washing, you know, my hands and everything. The only place that we can think about that, that it came from was walking through a building. Okay? And that's why I'm very leery about various things because when I hear now certain places that I've traveled to, there were cases of, of COVID there. It could have only been in the air because of, you know, like I said, I, I wore my mask constantly, you know. So that's why I say even with the number of students changing classes, once classes, you know, everyone is in their classes, the hallways are clear. Whether we create a protocol that tells the teachers, no students can come out of the classroom for the first 10 minutes and we do something in the hallway is better than doing nothing at all. That's my concern.
And I think, Dr. Mason, uh, to your point, what we can do as a school division is certainly look if there are other products. Uh, we know what we have on hand uh, and the products that we're using. Uh, but again, as we examine uh, a different product in terms of cleaning the classroom to make certain that um, you know, that it was natural um, and, and organic. Um, so we can, we'll also investigate and see if there are other products that um, we, we feel that would, would be safe. We'll follow up on that.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. All right, uh, Dr. Smith, we'll turn it back over to you for your next staff report.
Absolutely. And um, uh, Mr. Kilgore, I think what I, I heard uh, in general from the board uh, was not to proceed, at least um, you know, given where we are uh, prior to the beginning of the second nine weeks uh, at this particular point.
Correct.
Thank you. I think our final report, thank you. I mean, I appreciate all of the comments um, from, from, from board members. Um, at this time, we'll move right into the final report and that is our financial report and that Ms. Dorch will provide that.
Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, school board members, Dr. Smith and the Hampton community. Um, tonight I am presenting both the July and August 2020 monthly reports. At the end of July, our revenues totaled $9.8 million and this was 25.8% higher when compared to September, excuse me, of July of 2019. For August of 2020, revenues totaled 19.7 million and this was approximately 19.2% higher when compared to the previous year. Um, for both of these months, um, this increase, um, when looking at the previous year, is mainly being driven by um, state funding for standards of quality program payments from the state. Looking at the cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled 30.5 million and 35.3 million for July and August respectively. On the July 2020 and August 2020 monthly reports, um, you'll see additional information concerning our beginning fund balance. And you'll notice that the fiscal year 2020 encumbrances that were carried forward into this current school year are clearly displayed. Additionally, you'll see a placeholder on both reports for the carry forward funds that we requested for city council to reappropriate. Um, they, city council did approve those funds on September 23rd. Therefore, on the September 2020 board report, you will see that reflected within our financials. There's also an updated figure for our carry forward and our encumbrance figures based on our financial reporting process um, that we completed um, just a couple of weeks, well, a week ago now. Um, so that is included in the board report um, for your review. And then lastly, as always, um, within the reports, you have the transfers to and from the technology classification. And that concludes both the July and August 2020 board reports.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Uh, do I have any questions from board members? Hearing none. Uh, do I have any questions from our student rep? Nope. Okay. Uh, then thank you very much, Ms. Dorch. Uh, Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That concludes uh, staff, uh, superintendent's staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we now move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. Uh, I believe we have one recording this evening, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, we do.
And so we will forego the reading of our protocols. And I assume you've listened to the recording to where you know it's within the five minutes. So we will listen to this recording. Thank you.
Following is a comment from Brenda Marks. My name is Brenda Marks and I reside at 54 Marina Road. Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, board members. I address you today to vent my frustration with the school's failure to reopen face-to-face class time for those of us who chose it. Despite all of the efforts made by the school division, and I will acknowledge that there has been a lot, the virtual system is failing my child. Despite the fact that I have a signed mediated agreement between the board and myself that Hampton City Schools will follow my daughter's IEP, the division is failing to follow hers and what I have managed to get has taken a constant barrage of phone calls and emails. I believe we are up to 12 to 15 emails in the 18 days we have been in school to accomplish. She may have teachers that know she has an IEP, but I can say with all certainty that there are some, if not all, who have not even bothered to review hers to know what her accommodations actually are. I can give an example of the exact reason I know this to be true. She has an accom, an accommodation for extra time for assignments, yet in Google Classroom, I am getting notes turned in late when it is turned in the same day due, just after class or early the next morning. The CDC and the WHO both have set 5% positivity, positivity rates as the green light to reopen. And Hampton and the Peninsula District have been in the mid to upper 3% range for several weeks now. For those who want to keep their kids virtual, they have my blessing. But for those who are fully aware that their children are not getting an education in this setting, I implore you to bring our kids back to school. As your motto says, every child, every day, whatever it takes. I can assure you, my child is not getting whatever it takes. And yes, after I call and email and message, I will be spoon fed bits and pieces of information, but is not providing her the education she is entitled to. By the time school does return to in-person education, she will be so far behind, there will be no catching up and that is a disservice to her and to me as her parent. It is just not working for us and I should not be forced to file yet another complaint with the Virginia Department of Education or the United States Department of Education to get for her what she needs. Following is a comment from Brenda Marks. My name is Brenda Marks and I reside at 54 Marina.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Okay, uh, we now move on to uh, section five of our meeting deliberation. And the first item on deliberation is 5.01, the 2020 vision extension of current strategic plan by one year to include the 2020, 2021 school year. Do I have any comments on that item from board members? Dr. Smith, do we have a recommendation to move that to action this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would um, uh, ask that the board would consider uh, moving the um, 2020 vision extension of current strategic plan by one year uh, to action uh, to include the 2020, 2021 school year. Thank you.
All right, um, do I have a motion to move uh, deliberation item 5.01 from deliberation to action?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Dr. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Same. That was from Ms. Banks Gray. I have a, no?
Stephanie.
It was, okay. I'm looking around a bunch of faces. Okay. I have a, a motion from Dr. Mason and a second from Ms. Jackson Afanjah. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion carries. That will become action item 6.09. Okay, uh, our next item on the deliberation is item 5.02, appointment of Amy Pearson and Deborah Apperson to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Have any comments? Um, I will ask, uh, Ms. Judge, do you believe it is uh, the recommendation of the, uh, Special Ed Advisory Committee that we consider moving that from deliberation to action this evening?
Good evening. Yes, I do feel that it's important for us to move it to deliberation this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to move deliberation item 5.02 from uh, deliberation to action item 6.10?
So moved.
Who said it?
Ms. Cherry.
Oh, there you are. I have a motion from Ms. Cherry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Banks Gray. Um, so I have a motion from Ms. Cherry and a second from Ms. Banks Gray to move uh, deliberation item 5.02 to action item 6.10. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion carries. Our next deliberation item is item 5.03, agreements with Dominion Energy to acquire electric school buses. Do I have any discussion on that matter? Hearing none, I guess I will ask uh, Mr. Wills if it is important to move that item from deliberation to action.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, sir. If we can uh, move forward with 5.03 agreement with Dominion Energy to acquire the electric buses, sir.
Excellent, okay. Uh, do I have a motion to move deliberation item 5.03 to action item 6.11?
So moved.
I have a motion. I have a motion from Dr. Woodhouse and a second from Mr. Samuels. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Ms. Afanjah? Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, that's the last one. We're gonna do that on. So now I have deliberation item five point zero four, revision of school board policy IFEA, planning for instruction. Do I have any deliberative comments? Hearing none. Deliberation item five point zero five, revision of school board policy IGAH, family life education. Any comments? Hearing none. Deliberation item five point zero six, revision of school board policy IKE, promotion and retention of secondary students. Any deliberation comments? Right. Deliberation item five point zero seven, new school board policy IGID, college and career readiness. Any comments? Right. Uh, deliberation item five point zero eight, uh, revision of school board policy IG, adult education programs. Any comments? And our final deliberation item five point zero nine, new school board policy KQ, commercial promotional and corporate sponsorships and partnerships. Any deliberative comments? Excellent. All right. All those will be on our action agenda at our next meeting. We now move on to our action item agenda. And the first item on the action item agenda is the First Amendment to site lease for cell tower at Kigatan High School. Do I have a motion to approve action item six point zero one?
So moved.
I have a, okay, I have a motion from Ms. Jackson Afanjah and was that Ms. Banks Gray that seconded? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion carries. I'll now entertain an uh, a motion to approve action item six point zero two through six point zero eight. If someone would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from, who, who was?
I was your second it, uh, chairman.
And I, I heard your voice, but who made the motion?
Stephanie Jackson Afanjah.
I'm gonna have to get you guys to wave your hands or something.
Ladies first.
All right, so I have a motion from Ms. Jackson Afanjah and a second from Mr. Samuel to plu- approve item six point zero two through six point eight as, or six point zero eight as a block. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is six point zero nine, the twenty twenty vision extension of current strategic plan by one year to include the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Jackson Afanjah and a second, I believe, from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Motion carries. Our next action item is item six point one zero, which is the appointment of Amy Pearson and Deborah uh, Apperson to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Second.
All right, I think I have a motion from Dr. Woodhouse and who was, who was my second?
Banks Gray.
Yeah, Ms. Banks Gray, okay. Uh, do I have any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, will you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Motion carries. And our final action item is action item six point eleven, which is the agreement with Dominion Energy to acquire electric school buses. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cherry and a second from Mr. Samuels. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, we call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Uh, aye. Motion carries or motion passes. Uh, we now move on to deliberation first read and I believe all of the policies this evening will be presented by uh, Ms. Ruth.
You are correct. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Um, I do have five policies for this evening. The first is policy GBA equal opportunity employment. And we have updated this policy. There were some VSB up, VSB updates uh, in May of twenty twenty. But more importantly, we wanted to update the language to make sure it matches uh, both policy AC, our non-discrimination policy and GBAB, the discriminatory harassment policy. Both policies the board has, has uh, recently voted on sometime between August and now. So we want to make sure the language on those uh, matches. Um, our next policy is policy GCDA. That's the effective criminal conviction or founded complaint of child abuse and neglect policy. Um, this is a, a pretty significant change in policy from a philosophical perspective. This is uh, this change is based on code. Uh, prior to July one of twenty twenty, school divisions were not allowed to hire any convicted felons. Uh, with this code change, we are now uh, able to consider for employment. Does not mean that we will hire. Uh, but if there are um, candidates who have been convicted of a non-violent felony uh, and they have had their civil rights restored, then we will be able to consider them for employment. Um, there is a long list of barrier crimes. Um, and again, it's, it, it, we can consider them. Does not mean that we will necessarily hire them, but we certainly can consider them. Um, and this does, um, the laws that was previously written created some um, distinct equity issues for some candidates and this helped some of those equity issues. So um, I think in the long run, it will be um, a very positive change. That is the most significant change in this particular policy. Uh, the next policy is um, policy GDH, support personnel grievances. Uh, again, an update uh, based on a code change. We did move some language around regarding the definition of employees. Um, but if you look at page uh, two, uh, section two, for many years, Hampton City Schools has used a hearing officer panel uh, that has been approved by the school board. Uh, so that is now required by code. So a- as usual, Hampton City Schools is, is ahead of, ahead of the game. Um, and we are just now putting into writing what our practice has been and what code now requires. Um, next policy is GCPD dismissal of personnel. Again, this is based on a Virginia code change. Um, and if you look in paragraph one, under the definition of dismissal, uh, per code, um, we are deleting the definition of incompetency. And I believe that is the only change for this particular policy, but code has removed that particular definition. And then uh, the, the last policy for review is policy GCG, certi- certified employees probation and contractual status. Again, this is a code change. Um, probably five or six years ago, uh, code was changed to allow school divisions to extend probationary periods if there uh, was a need for, for teachers. Uh, that um, ability has been removed as of July one. So uh, moving forward, a teacher will serve a maximum of a three-year probationary period. There will be no, no additional extensions to that probationary period. And so the deletions in language just reflect um, the removal of that option. And that, that is a summary of the changes I'm presenting tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Uh, do I have any questions uh, board members for clarification of the policy that are being presented or from our student rep? Any questions for clarification? Yes, Mr. Carnegie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, in policy GCPD dismissal of personnel. Why are we, so is code updated so that we, Hampton City School sets up um, our own definition for incompetency or is it we cannot define incompetency?
Um, the code, code did in the past have a specific definition for incompetency. And that was the language that has been removed from the, the policy. Um, that does not necessarily prevent us from coming up with our own definition, but at this point in time, it is not something that we are choosing to add to the policy.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Uh, we now move on to information section of our meeting. Uh, quickly to announce, our next meeting is a work session of, on October twenty-first at six thirty PM. And that will be a virtual meeting. And then our next meeting after that is our slated regular meeting of November fourth at six thirty. And as it stands right now, unless things change, that meeting will be in person at Jones Magnet Middle School. Obviously, um, times are still dynamic and so clearly we're gonna reserve the right to maybe change that, but as it stands right now, it's likely that their November fourth meeting will be in person at Jones. Um, so now I will move on to informational items and I'll start with you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, just one uh, follow-up. Um, we had said that we would share with you information relative to internet connectivity. And um, I think that Dr. Cagiano is prepared to do that this evening, just uh, to provide you with that quick update.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Just two slides here for a quick update. Certainly John Eagle is still on the call, our Director of Information Technology. Would like to recognize and thank Mr. Eagle and his team for really, uh, and especially Mr. Eagle, uh, leading by example and making this really a, a personal mission. So as we share with the board, again, with that survey that was conducted at the end of June and closed last week, we have had two hundred sixty-two families or four hundred sixty-four students indicate that they did not have high-speed internet access. So since the beginning of school, early in the summer, it began, Mr. Eagle and his team have been working on this. So as of yesterday, the technology department has assisted three hundred and thirty-nine of those four hundred and sixty-four students to provide internet access, whether that be through Cox or Hampton City Schools issued MiFi devices. There were a hundred and twenty-five families where the tech department has made multiple contacts and have not been able to get in touch with. Uh, two days ago, we sent a list of those by name and address, email addresses to building principals and tasked them with the responsibility because of the relationships following up individually. And then in that document we shared with them, they're notating, number one, whether these students have been engaged in instruction. And then number two, whether they're still in need for internet access. So hopefully by the end of next week, we will have addressed all four hundred and sixty-four of these uh, of the, of the issues in reference to a lack of access with internet, high-speed internet access. And just to give you an idea of, of the volume of support that we've been providing to Mr. Eagle's department, since the first day of school, they have received over two thousand eight hundred calls, over one thousand emails. And then since September eighth, actually meeting in person or averaging over five hundred and fifty appointments uh, in person per week with families to answer questions, change out devices, et cetera. So it really has been a, a team effort, a concerted effort to ensure for my students have the supplies needed. Uh, particularly in the access, a one hundred percent virtual environment. So I'd really like to recognize, Mr. Eagle.
Great.
Thank you, Dr.
From, from me, Mr. Um, no more. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, um, and I will, I guess when you've got nineteen thousand students and less than a hundred and twenty-five, you're, you're down below one percent, which is pretty amazing, but you're still actively pursuing that less than one percent, which is kudos to the division for doing that. Okay, uh, informational item from board members. Gotta raise your hand. There you go, Ms. Cherry. You're on mute, Ms. Cherry.
I'm sure Mr. Samuels would jump in on this, um, but I want to just thank the board um, for allowing me to attend the virtual Cube Conference um, a couple of weeks ago. And for those who may not know, Cube stands for Councils of Urban Boards of Education. So all of the um, discussions speak to those boards that um, reside in urban districts. And there was so much, just a wealth of information from the opening statement when um, the presenters um, did a wonderful piece by using visuals, even his own pair of shoes to just point out that you really can't make decisions for a lot of other people until you've walked in their shoes. All the way to the end of it, where the final presenters talked about, let's be clear, COVID has caused all of us to really understand that everybody's gonna need a little extra help regardless of where they are right now. Everybody's gonna need a little extra help. And that's whether it's a student or staff member. So I really did um, gain a lot of information from Cube and wanted to just say thank you to board members for allowing me to do that virtually.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels.
Yeah, um, Chairman Gilgore, um, thank you so uh, for this opportunity. And I also want to echo um, um, what Ms. Cherry shared about the opportunity to attend the Cube Conference. Um, the workshops were um, dynamic. I, I attended a workshop that was sponsored by um, Google and uh, it, it, it um, shared information about um, coding, um, how important it is for our children um, to, to learn coding and the fact that they have a curriculum that is uh, user-friendly, um, um, that teachers and families can access and students and whomever can learn how to code. And so, a- and, and so when we talk about um, equity and practicing equity and so forth, um, I believe this is um, a transformative. Um, and so once again, um, it was just, uh, it, it was, it, I, I learned so much um, from the presenters and from the workshops. And also before I close, I want to also give a great shout-out to John Eagle. Um, as Dr. Uh, Cagiano mentioned, that my family was one of the families that reached out to the IT department. Um, my son, um, who is in the fifth grade, was having some challenge with his Chromebook. And, and so um, John, John Eagle team um, responded to us in a very um, prompt manner within twenty-four hours. Um, he responded, um, he was able to walk us through the process. And um, and, and so James was in a good place where he could fully participate in the virtual learn. So I just want to say kudos to John Eagle and his um, staff.
You're making me blush. Thank you.
Any other board members, informational items? Yes, Dr. Mason?
Yeah, just want to give Dr. Smith just another thank you for continuing to lead this division and do a wonderful job. Just want to give Dr. Smith just another thank you for continuing to lead this division and do a wonderful job with the division leadership team. You guys are doing great. A huge shout out to all of the staff, teachers, custodians, the nurses, everybody who's, who's in these buildings, who's working hard, trying to get things prepared for our students to come back. You know, you have Kelly Goro who's doing her thing to make sure all of the information is getting out to the community. You know, Ann Bain is right there doing her, her thing in, in the same department. You guys are doing great. And every day, you know, we hear great things about Hampton City Schools, and it's because of all of the great work that you all are doing. And I don't see Ms. Edwina on here. Please tell her I've gotten more compliments and kudos on those lunches. Everyone is just happy and excited. So you guys are doing a great job. So thank you so much for continuing to, you know, do what you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Anyone else?
Might I just add? Chair. Just a little something that I would like to share, that I also appreciate what the staff, Dr. Smith and his staff are doing, especially with the dual piece that we, that we have where students can be in high school and also get college credit. I ran into a parent at Kroger, and she was excited about her, her son, who would be graduating from, he's from Phoebus. He'll be graduating from Phoebus this coming, well, next May, 2021. And she was telling me how that he will also be finishing with a an associate's degree at the same time. She was really excited about that because she said that her son has, has dreams of going to medical school. He's a very, very intelligent young man. He's doing great in school, and he's going to be graduating with a high school diploma and a college degree. So I want to thank you for doing such a great work and, and, and putting together such great programs for the Hampton City School system. Makes me feel proud to be a part of this board and to say that I'm a part of the Hampton City School machine that is educating every child every day for whatever it takes.
That's true. And it is a machine.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mason, or Dr. Woodhouse, I'm sorry. And I did want to say one thing, we haven't, we haven't touched on it this evening, but I wanted to thank Dr. Smith and the entire school division for the incredible graduation numbers and clearly, we are still very blessed in Hampton. We still lead the way in so many ways that are important. And that, that press release or that, that information was really, really amazing.
It was.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kilgore. May I, may I take just a moment to acknowledge Dr. Haynes, our Executive Director for Secondary Schools, along with his team, the grad specialists, classroom teachers, high school principals, assistant principals, for their great work and so many others. Of course, we know that the classroom teachers are on the front line. But we had so many individuals, alternative education, all working as partners to ensure that our young people would finish strong. So I want to thank Dr. Haynes for his exceptional leadership in that area as well.
Perfect.
All right. So with that, I'd like to thank the community for joining us this evening and thank everyone who joined us on this Zoom session here this evening. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.